All right, it's now seven oh one and we have all one, two, three, four, one, two, five, five of us. So I'm going to open the February thirteenth meeting. And I will read, actually, I will first take a roll call since we are on Zoom. We'll go in alphabetical order.
Arnold eye.
Or Arnold here.
Arnold here.
Brown here.
Modell here.
Reed here.
Mel here.
Great. Um, I will read the agenda at seven P M. Community input, then appointments and resignations. Discussion of the town clerk about executing the presidential primary warrant. We'll have presentations by the town planner at seven twenty-five, meeting with T S A. Budget twenty fiscal year twenty-five budget and town meeting review with finance committee. Town administrators report, one day liquor license approval, cemetery D transfers, minutes and warrants, liaison reports, community input and adjournment. So we're going to start with community input. Is there anybody from the community who would like to make a comment or ask a question? For the board. And we see Christina is the only one in Maryland. That are here from them and they're not raising their hands. All right, moving on to appointments and resignations. Let's see if I can find my. Appointments and resignations. We have some motions. Could somebody, I would entertain a motion to appoint Jonathan Ryan to the position of officer for the Carlisle Police Department, pending successful salary negotiations, negotiations and required hiring administration with an anticipated start date of February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
I assume the negotiations are pretty far along if the start dates tomorrow.
Yes, so we're not bringing you officers until, until all of the background and physicals and negotiations are done. So Officer Ryan is ready to start. He brings experience from the Drakehead Police Department, also security in Lowell. He's um, was very excited to get the opportunity to serve here and we feel the same feeling, an important vacancy and ready to go starting tomorrow pending your vote. Any questions?
Are we gonna do a penning ceremony or? Next meeting?
Yeah, we would have done it tonight, but someone closed town hall.
Oh, okay. Somebody, somebody. Okay. So um, any further discussion? Uh, we need to vote, do a roll call vote.
Arnold eye.
Brown eye.
Modell eye.
Reed eye.
Snell eye.
Thank you. There's another motion. Do any, do you want me to read it? It entertains a motion to appoint Juniper Friedman to the position of municipal assistant pending successful salary negotiations and required hiring administration with an anticipated start date of March fourth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second. So, second.
Okay, great. Any discussion, questions? Ryan, would you like to?
So this, this position supports the historical commission, the community preservation committee and the municipal facilities committee, all of which are eager to help. Um, our, my office has been helping with, with those departments, but volunteers have been stepping up, so much needed hire. Juniper is a resident, brings a lot of database Excel experience and writing and technological experience from her time on the M I T review. She is looking to get into government, but part-time also worked at the mosquito. So we think she's uh, gonna hit the ground running and be an immediate impact for us.
And I had the opportunity to meet with her um, in the process and just say that I think she'd be a great addition.
How, how many, how many hours a week?
She is up to nineteen hours per week.
And is this a staff add or is it replacing something?
Somebody. Janine used to be in this position. She moved to board of health assistant. So this is a vacant part-time position, no additional hours.
So there's not a budget in impact compared with prior year?
No.
Thank you.
There any other questions, comments? So roll call vote.
Arnold eye.
Brown eye.
Modell eye.
Reed eye.
Snell eye.
Great. Next on our agenda are the community appointments and there's a slug of them.
You want me to do the town meeting ones?
Well, before we do those, um, let's just, I just want to say that we had seven applicants for the town meeting study committee and um, we're going to be appointing six of them because I think one of them actually finally Nancy Pierce is going to become an associate member instead of a full member. So does anybody want to discuss how many members we're putting on or is there any questions or concerns about that?
Where did we end up when we talked about this before?
We wanted as many people as possible outside of our, you know, and, and staff and stuff. And we, we wanted at least five and seven came and so the question is, did we want to hold it to five or go do the whole seven? Nancy, you know, as I said, um, she has some health concerns and her husband does as well. So she did write to us and said she'd rather just be an associate so that she doesn't, you know, if she has to bow out, it doesn't uh, upset the quorum. So, um, but I think, I think, you know, I'm thrilled that we got as many people as we did to um, come forward. Uh, there's a lot of, I wouldn't say not necessarily new names or some new names, but there's certainly younger people who have kids. The next generation that we really need to hear from. Okay.
I'm comfortable with this, with having seven.
Me too.
Yeah, it looks like there's a question from the moderator.
Oh.
Yeah, Kate, I would, I would just point out that, that the, the original concept that, that was the select board voted on in December was to have at least five from the community and have one each from the select board and the FinCom. So my understanding is that Mark Bernstein uh, is the, the nominee, nominee slash volunteer from FinCom.
Yes.
So um, you still need to have one of you.
Oh.
At least if you're going to keep to the original concept. So, so um, so that, that would say you, you actually do need to add another name to the appointment list. But that's up to you, obviously.
Let's, let's take care of the ones that we have on this list and then we'll have a separate conversation about who of us wants to, you know, which, which of us will become the, the cat that gets spelled uh, whatever. And, and so that we get at least these, these going. Okay, so does somebody have these up or?
I do. I can do it now if you want.
Great.
I moved to appoint Brian Waterson, eighty Aberdeen Drive, as a member of the town meeting study committee with a term to end June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And I moved to appoint Danielle Zion, seventy-five Acton Street, as a member of the town meeting study committee with a term to end June thirty, twenty twenty-five. And move to appoint Deepa Chungi, forty-five Virginia Farm Road Lane, as a member of the town meeting study committee, term to end June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Move to appoint Don Drinkwater, two thirty-five Fisk Street, as a member of the town meeting study committee with a term to end June thirty, twenty twenty-five. And move to appoint Frank Gromkowski, seventy-four Prospect Street, as a member of the town meeting study committee, term to end June thirty, twenty twenty-five. And move to appoint Jerry Boucher, ten Garrison Road, ten Garrison Way, as a member of the town meeting study committee with the term to end June thirty, twenty twenty-five. And move to appoint Mark Burstein, forty-three.
He's not, he's finance committee.
Right. Do you want me to include him on this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't see why we should.
To appoint Mark Burstein, forty-three Peter Hunz Road, as the finance committee representative to the town meeting study committee with a term to end June thirty, twenty twenty-five. And move to appoint Nancy Pierce, one-one-five-two Westford Street, as an associate member of the town meeting study committee with a term to end June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
And I apologize. I thought that was appointing him to the finance committee.
Yeah, no.
Of course, we don't even, okay, sorry.
It's okay. Um, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Uh, are there any further comments? All right, so roll call vote.
Yeah, I'm just, I think it's great that these people have stepped forward.
Yeah. Um, roll call vote.
Arnold eye.
Brown eye.
Modell eye.
Reed eye.
Snell eye.
Great. Now, we need to appoint one of us as a select board representative to the town meeting study committee with a term to end June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have any?
How often, how often do they meet? You think?
Yeah.
That's Wayne, right?
I think it's going to have to be up to the committee to decide, um, you know, what, what they want to do. You know, I, I might advise them to try to have uh, two or three meetings in that, again, this is just my, my own advice, which they would be free to ignore. That, you know, they might try to meet every two weeks for maybe two or three times just to get some momentum going because it, it's hard for a, a um, you know, a, an ad hoc group to develop some momentum. So my advice to them would be have a couple of meetings in relatively short succession and then to settle into like a once a month rhythm. Uh, and you know, and see if that, that suffice.
Is the goal?
But it's up to them.
Forgive me, but the, is the goal to make recommendations at this town meeting or no? Come back to the select board? What's the? What's the end product?
Right, the um, what was, what was discussed in the charter um, from December was that, that the end product is, is to get something uh, to get some sort of final report in advance of the spring twenty twenty-five annual town meeting. However, um, we also, and this was, you know, something that Nathan had, had suggested that I heartily supported. Um, and I think the rest of you thought it was a good idea too, to say, look, if there are ideas that you think are worth trying out, say at this spring town meeting, if we have a fall town meeting, at the fall town meeting, um, we can experiment. So don't be afraid to make recommendations um, that could be uh, implemented or experimented with even in advance of a final report.
I mean, I'm willing to do it if nobody else has a burning desire to do it. I.
Well, I'm going to say Nathan, you're the one that kind of got this up and running to start with and had the concept. So I'd like to give you a crack at it if you're interested in, can, you know, seeing this through.
Yeah, well, no, I mean, I think what I was interested in seeing through and I, and I think I um, really just being pulled along in Wayne's coattails because I did not do that much was just making sure that the committee got you know, created. You know, I, I, I think I would be fine if David wants to be on the, on the committee itself.
I mean, I'm, yeah, if somebody else want, really wants it, I, they should take it. I, I'm happy. I want to make sure I'm pulling my respective way. I know that the chair has a lot to do. Uh, we certainly ask a lot of Barney because she sort of steps up to lots of things. I don't quite have an accounting in my mind between myself, Travis and Nathan, you know, who's doing what, but I'm, I'm happy to, you know, it's an important thing. I think getting, definitely getting more um, participation is really important. I totally support that. And I am also very encouraged that we have a more diverse and a younger group of volunteers now. So that's exciting to me, so.
So my, my real concern is to be totally transparent is um, I think with town meeting coming up and with what I have going on at work, I don't think I could really contribute what's needed to be um, to be pushing this through as quickly as it should be pushed through in the next couple of months.
Yeah, I think, I mean, Wayne said maybe try something at this town meeting. I would say definitely not going to do that, but um, I agree with what he, you know, recommended in terms of getting, taking advantage of momentum and getting things going. Is important. I think, you know, maybe what's, what's probably good to do is for that committee to really observe closely the dynamics of this town meeting. Now that, you know, they're on the committee with a lens of like, what is working and what isn't like? I read some of those letters of people, you know, they're brief but fairly thoughtful. One, Drinkwater, I think, put a pretty long thing in. Really think about like, how's this working? Who's coming? What are we doing? You know, use that as a springboard for further discussion to, I like the idea of maybe trying some things that for all town meeting.
Travis? Put you on the spot.
Oh, I, David said it nicely and I think he'd be well, well, you know, positioned to do that.
So um, can I have a motion to appoint um, David Modell as the select board representative to the town meeting study committee, term to end June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
All right, uh, any further conversation? Um, so roll call vote.
Thank you, David. Arnold eye.
Brown eye.
Modell eye.
Reed eye.
Snell eye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, David.
Okay.
Okay. Next. Okay.
So just, just for the record, they, I also say thank you to David and thank you to all the people who volunteered. I'm, I'm equally thrilled at the group that has stepped forward and look forward to working with them. And thank you, thank you, Mark. I, I know, I know in particular you're busy by being on the FinCom and I appreciate you stepping up as well.
Ryan, are you like the, are you participant, who's participating town side?
We are not, staff is not participating.
Okay. I mean, Wayne, are you, who is organizing, like setting the first meeting and stuff?
Uh, Ryan, I thought you said you did want to participate.
I, I said I would help um, with organization, but I, I really think these recommendations should be.
Okay.
Okay, that, that was fine. I, I didn't, I, I, I misunderstood.
Help, help us organize ourselves, please.
Yeah, I.
Step to let the dog in.
Kate, um, Kate, uh, in a, when I spoke with her last week, had suggested that it might be appropriate if the select board member served as chair pro tem to get the first meeting organized. Which I thought might, might be helpful and just my experience from um, the, the governance task force that i- if someone at least would be temporary chair uh, and then they, the, let the committee itself um, decide on a chair at the second or third meeting where people get a chance to know each other and figure out who's, who's doing what, that, that, that would be wise. Obviously, I would be uh, happy to work with you, David, and we'll have Ryan's assistance in contacting people.
Are you, are you on the committee or you're? What, are you on the committee?
I, uh, both Ryan and I are ex officio, so you know, we are, we are there to be as resources, but we're not voting.
I get it. Okay, I'd be happy to serve as pro tem chair. Ryan, you and I can sort out getting a meeting notice out and setting up first meeting.
So not a doodle call, I'll say. All right.
Gretchen will figure it out. When in doubt, ask Gretchen.
Is there any more on this item? Great. Um, at seven fifteen, we were to have the town clerk, but I don't see her on.
So I'm stepping in for her. She's, she can't make it tonight.
Ah, okay, to execute the presidential part, primary warrant. And I see you are sharing the screen.
Yes, so this is the, just a copy of the warrant that gets posted. This is a it's a statutory requirement. There are, there are no decisions here except you accept this warrant.
Okay.
And uh, let me see, there is motion, I would accept a motion that the select board vote to execute the warrant for the March fifth, twenty twenty-four presidential primaries presented in the packet or.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Second.
Sorry, sorry. Thank you, Nathan, for reminding me about the second. Any further discussion? So roll call vote.
Arnold eye.
Brown eye.
Modell eye.
Reed eye. So, uh, Travis, you are.
Sorry, I had it on mute.
Yeah. So was that an eye?
Yes, it's an eye.
Eye, eye.
Eye.
All right.
Menace talk like a pirate day. That's like October, right?
So uh, we need to keep on moving because we have a very packed agenda. I see Julie is here. Um, she's going to give us a G I S uh, presentation, N B T Z, a zoning primer. Hi Julie and welcome.
Hey.
Go for it.
Um, okay, so I will just quickly, I'm going to try to get through a lot of things in forty-five minutes. Um, let me just screen share really quick. Can you all see the um, town hall website, town, sorry, town, town website? Um, so I just wanted to start by saying that um, for the G I S demo that I'm going to give you tonight, there was a much more thorough demo done uh, last Tuesday by the company, the C A I Technologies. Um, and there's a link to that YouTube video here on this G I S project site, which is on the planning board website. So I recommend if you really want to get into the details of all the functionality of the site that you watch this, it's really instructive. Um, and tonight what I'm going to show you is a lot more basic, um, and just kind of some of the highlights. So, um, when you enter the access G I S site that will hopefully be public within the next month, there's going to be a splash screen with a disclaimer on it. I'm working on the language right now. Um, but once you get past that and you accept that, you know, the town is uh, not responsible for the accuracy of the data that we try our best um, in, in all the rest of the language that's in that. Um, this is what you're going to see. So this is um, the, the standard base map with some layers, uh, open space layers that they have kind of on all the time. Um, there's a public facing side and a staff only side. So you'll see the public facing side and then at some point there will be ten uh, people on staff who have logins. And so we'll be able to see all the public information and then we'll have access to um, additional layers that the town may feel are more sensitive and should be more protected as well as additional functionality. Um, advanced querying and, and document upload and things like that. Um, so this is web-based. All browsers are supported by it. Um, and I'll just, I'm just going to jump in. So if you want to search for a property, you can, for example, library, you can type in library, you get Carlisle Library. You can type in twenty-two Bedford and search for it that way. If you happen to know the parcel ID, you can also put that in. Um, and then you'll get a list of hits um, that related to what you search for. If you click on this button here, this document, you get to see uh, some of the additional information that it's, that's attached to the library. And if you click on this button here, you can zoom to parcel. So it'll zoom right to the library. If you click on the text, it'll open up a box below that kind of gives you a lot more information about the property. So for example, over here you have assessors information. Over here you have information from permit pro. So like the permits that they've, they've pulled, um, it looks like there's seventeen listed here. You can get information about those. Um, and you can scroll through by clicking on this tiny little arrow and you can kind of see what those permits are. Um, just want to make sure I go through everything. So once you're on a parcel selected like this, you have a bunch of different tools up here. Um, I'm going to start with the abutters tool, so can open that, you can put in any kind of radius. Three hundred's a pretty standard planning radius statutorily. Um, but you can put any kind of radius you want and you can even put um, negative. So if you want to know like setbacks, like say you have fifteen foot setbacks from all sides, you could put in negative fifteen and you'd get um, something that shows you a fifteen foot setback. Up here at this button, once you have your abutters, you can export this Excel, PDF, mailing labels, all the works. Um, there's also the ability to add a buffer to um, other types of layers other than just parcels and all. If I don't touch on that later, just know that that's there and you can learn more about that from the demo. So, to get rid of this, you just hit this trash can. Oops, sorry. I need to get rid of all of it, but I got rid of all of it. So anyway, we'll go back to the library. I want to show you some of the other tools up here. You have access to a bird's eye view. This is pretty cool. Bird's eye, the oblique view. So you can see the library kind of from an angle. And you can rotate around like this. You can see the library from different sides. And you can use, you can use your like middle scroll button on your mouse. You can scroll in and out. You can expand it to take up more of the screen. Close it. And then over here, the box, this is like this reflects where you are, what you're looking at. Um, that, the other thing you can do that's cool is street view. So if you click on this guy right here, you get the Google street view and you get the Bing street view and then it works just like you're used to with regular street view. You can zoom up and down the street. You can open it so it takes up the whole screen if you want to do that. And then up here you can just close it. Um, I'm going really fast because I have a lot to cover in forty-five minutes. Um, so please interrupt me at any time if you have questions. Um, all right, getting to the table of contents over here on this side, we have the layers. Um, there's a group of layers that'll be up here that'll be for staff only. Um, that's still being kind of worked out what those will be. These are just uh, for demonstration purposes. And then we have the public map section here. So you can expand it with the buttons here. You can see kind of what all these layers include and collapse. The public map, these are, this is like our Carlisle Geo, Geo database. It's hosted by C A I Technologies. It's, it's kind of where we can do our work locally. Um, as opposed to the state maintained mapping layers. Um, so the state data, there's a live connection to their database. So they get automatically uploaded, updated as the state updates them, they're automatically updated in our system. So that's why they, we keep them in separate Geo databases. Um, because they're being hosted by different entities. Um, all right, and then let me just this real quick. So as you zoom in and out on the map, which you can do with your scroll bar on your mouse, you'll see like certain things show up and certain things don't. So certain layers are set to, to show up at certain zoom scales. Um, just so that the map doesn't get too cluttered. So one thing you'll notice is as you zoom in, you get more detailed parcel information like the, the parcel ID and then the lot acreage shows up. Um, okay, so just going through some of the layers that are available in the public map. Under property map, a lot of the stuff in here came directly from our um, tax maps that you have, we have in hard copy and town hall. Those were done in CAD. So there was a CAD to, to G I S conversion that was done as part of this project. So those layers are all in here. Um, and then we have, I'm just going to do zoning since, you know, worst kept secret in town. I love zoning. Um, so let's turn that on. So those, these zoning layers also came from our CAD um, database and also our master plan mapping. And then for state layers, we have um, a whole bunch of different natural resources layers here. So let's put on the wetlands just to, just for example purposes. Um, and so you have state layers, you have local layers, you can work with this transparency. If you want to make some of them lighter and darker, you can do that here with the slider and you can also do it with the public map here. Um, so that's important because the next thing I'm going to show you, which is over on the right-hand side of the screen, this like hamburger button, you click on that. Up at the top, you see base map. So there's a bunch of different choices. We have three categories. Um, Esri, that's Environmental Systems Resource Institute. They actually create the ArcMap software. Um, C A I Technology is using their platform and so they have an agreement with them that they have to default the, the streets, the Esri streets map is their default base map. Um, but we have the ability to go in and if, any user can go in and choose any base map you want. Um, so under local, you'll find like the local statewide aerials. If we did a local flyover, that would be put in here. Um, the mass, the muni mapper base map is in here. And then under others, we have the open street map and a bunch of different Google maps. So I actually really like the open street map, but it, it, it has a lot of redundant. We have the open street map and a bunch of different Google maps. So I actually really like the open street map, but it, it, it has a lot of redundant uh, information that we actually have locally as well. So um, it's, it's very rich, but it's not always necessary. Um. And then let me see, let me just show you an area.
Quick question. I've um, Julie, um, where, is there a key somewhere? So because I see there's wetlands, some of them are blue, some of them are green. Uh, I see different colors. So where would I go for figuring out? What, what is what?
Great question, Kate. So right here, the DEP wetlands where I'm hovering, if you expand on that, you'll get the key for what the different wetlands mean. And then you see this little slider over here on the side. If you pull this up and down, you can see. Do you see what I'm doing? You're muted, Keith.
Okay, so I, I see that the blue are the marsh bogs and the green ones are the wooded wetlands. Okay.
Right. And let me turn off the zoning layer because that's just making the map really crazy looking. So we'll just look, keep the wetlands on. And then like I said, if you want to, if you put the aerial underneath it and you were like, oh, I still can't really see what I want to see, you can take this slider and you can make the state layers like more transparent. Um. Kind of pull them on and off like that. So um, and then the other thing you can do, if you want to just see like the wetlands and you don't want anything underneath, you can turn the base map off. It's over here. On the right here, so you can have no base map at all and just look at some of the GIS layers that are, that are over here. Um.
Are, are those flagged wetlands or are they from satellite images and then reported wetlands? How do they determine them?
Right. Yes, that's a great question. So those are typ- typically the state wetlands layer is based on a flyover. It's based on aerial photography and wetland scientists kind of being able to read aerial photography and look for different types of wetlands. Um. Some towns will, will have like the DEP layer and then also will build a local wetlands layer based on delineations that are provided to the conservation commission. Um. For specific projects. That's something we had in Reading. We had the state layer and the local layer. Um. But so, so this, this gets back to the disclaimer. The disclaimer actually has some clear language in it that like, you know, the, this information here is not meant to be used for survey purposes. It's not meant to be used to get a building permit, right? It's representational only. Um, so if you did want, need to, if you did have wetlands on your property and you wanted to build something, you'd have to get a wetlands delineation and go through the whole conscom process. You wouldn't be able to to rely on this, this information um, for that process. So great question. Um, the last thing I was going to kind of go through with the tools over here on this, this side right here. So um, you have your zoom in tool. Your zoom out tool. Identify which you can use uh, to click on. Um, let me show you how this works. You can click on more than just parcels and you can identify what they are. So you, so here you see it outlined a parcel, but up here you'll see this next. This will show you all the different layers that are represented on that parcel. So if I click on that, click through that, the next layer is wetlands. And now it's got the wetlands highlighted and let me just this over a little bit. And then once you have the wetlands highlighted, this is where you get the ability to do in a butter. So if you wanted to say, okay, I want to see all, you know, all properties within three hundred feet of this wetland. You can do in a butters like that, put in three hundred and get your list and then you can download your list. So you can do that with all sorts of different layers. Um. Including like the historic district. If you wanted to notify people in the historic district or people within five hundred feet of the historic district, you could select that. Do, do the butters around that and then you can get your list. So there's a lot of functionality there. Um. And then this is zoom to locations. This is good if you're on your phone and you have a GPS and you, you, you're using this map on your phone and you want to um see where you are in relation to things. This home button gets you to the full extent, which is basically what I showed you at the beginning. Um, but in this case it keeps on all the layers you've, you've loaded. Um. And then we have zoom extents. So if you want to zoom back to where you were. Click on that. And then if you wanted to go back, go back. Um. If, let me just go back in. If you had a certain section of town you were looking at and you want to share it with someone, you have the ability to share a link. So you can click on that share button. You get a link that you can share with other people and that could be especially useful, given these other tools on the side here. So if you wanted to highlight something on the map. You have draw tools. So you can do polygons, polylines, points and circles. I'll just do circle. So if you wanted to put a circle around something, you can say what radius you want. And then you just click on the map, the circle shows up, you can show how, you, you can pick your symbol. You can symbolize it how you like. Um. And then you can add text to it. You can add arrows. Um, and then you could take that, I'm not going to do it, but you could kind of like draw on the map yourself. Click on the link. Get, get a link that it will, it will store what you've dr- drawn on it. And then you can share that link with other people. But as soon as you exit the, the platform, all that gets lost. Um, but you have your link which will keep it. So. Um. And then another thing you can do, let me go back to the tools over here. You can also print. So if you created a specific map of a specific area, you can print. Um. And let's see. You get some different choices of, of layout and size and things like that. And then you can, if it's not showing exactly what you want, you can take the map and you can move it. And you can, you know, get it to exactly where you want it. Um, just by like uh, right clicking, you're kind of grabbing screen. And what else did I want to show you? The last, last but not least, measure. Um, this one actually could be quite useful. So if you want to know the distance, say between like the, the rough rate estimate distance between a couple of different structures, you can click on measure. And you can actually think you need to be. Yeah, click on the map. Drop and then there and it shows you your bearings as well as your, your um, length. But there, and you have the ability to also measure an area as, as similar. Um. And you can display it in yards, kilometers, meters, miles, however, however you want. So it's a lot of functionality here. Um. I guess now I'll just, if you guys have any questions, that's a really like quick and dirty overview um, of, of some of the functionality that's available.
Do you envision that the tax maps will be mirrored in here or layered in somehow so that you can look at assessments and everything else, all the assessor information?
Right. So that is what these parcel lines are. They're from our tax maps um, updated as of the end of twenty twenty three.
So you can go the card, the tax, the assessor card.
Yep, great question. So yeah, so if you click on a parcel, right, and it's outlined here, property, and then you want to see the property card, there's a link over here to the Patriot property card. And then, and and there it is.
Right.
Yep. Um. And then also you can link to the permits and that. So you get kind of a display down here, but you can link to the actual PDF documents up here. Um, and this, this, there's a little uh, I kind of an I symbol next to the building sketch. So you can see like, kind of, you can get a sense of building layout from that, or you can click on it and just open it and look at it that way.
Julie, do you know if um, which of our butters, if any, use this same platform? By butters, I mean budding towns.
Okay, that's a great question. Um, I should know that off the top of my head. I know a lot of other towns that do use XGIS. I, um. I don't want to misspeak. Acton might be one of them. Um. Oh, I can look into that for you, Nathan. I know Concord uses People GIS. Trying to think. The, the towns that I was looking at as a model for this for us were not, are not adjacent to us. Um, so I don't call off the top of my head what our adjacent towns use.
Okay, thanks.
Um, I have two questions, Julie. It's very impressive. So one is maybe it's more of a comment, just the security. I noticed when you started. There's a few things that only administrators, only staff can view like I guess where gas lines are and things like that. Just, you know, let's make sure we have the best security layers because if there's information out there and it's accessible, you know, somebody could hack it, right? So we're a small town. We don't worry too much about that stuff, but you know, we got to always be cautious of um mischief makers. And the more information that's available, the more they have the tools to do it. The um, the question I have, I think is so this is already done, right? But you're, you have some. You have like a staff request, right? Are you going to move to that now? You've already, it's already implemented, right? This thing, but you, you need uh, more or what, what do you need now?
Yeah, so it's, it's right now it's staff only. Um, the assessor and I have been going back and forth with CAI. There's a few things out that are outstanding that we want fixed and then it will be public. Um, so there, there CAI Technologies is like literally working on this map every day. They, I sent them a six page document of all the things I want to change originally and we kind of, kind of been working back and forth. They've been providing responses and fixing things and reorganizing and adding different colors to different things and just um, making it more contextually specific to Carlisle. And I think kind of highlighting the things that are important for the town. I mean, you know, I've been here fourteen months, so what do I know? But just customizing it a bit to Carlisle. Um. And there's just a few things left for them to do and then, and then the site will be public.
That was paid for with a grant? How, how, how did we finance that?
So this was paid for partly by planning board surplus salary funds because I didn't start until December um of uh, twenty twenty two and then um, eighty seven thousand five hundred dollars of ARPA funds. So, so the two things together actually pay for uh, both of our GIS contracts. So not all of that money is for CAI Technologies, only about half of it is. And then the other half is for Adam Karowski, who's here with us tonight. He's working on our strategic plan. Our local Geo database design, um, and some of our local, developing some of our local layers um, that will get added into this site.
But you in packet is like a description of needing some more people, right?
Sorry, needing some more.
Well, in the packet is, is a request, maybe it's potential three year capital budget and then there's like a staffing scenario. Is that? Oh, is there an ask in here or is this just informational today?
It's just information at this point, but the, the Adam's going to go through that as part of the GIS strategic plan. There's some options kind of outlined as to how we maintain um, this system going forward. So um, and there's some like different staffing ideas that are possible. Um. Yep. And some of the new staff that we've hired recently in town hall actually have experience with GIS. Um, so that'll be a tremendous asset as well.
Kate, you're on mute.
Yeah, I know. I just figured that. Uh, you still have twenty five minutes. Are you, are you switching over to Adam or are you going to MBTA?
Yeah, so my, my plan was to switch to Adam so we can give you kind of a high level introduction to the strategic plan. Um, it wouldn't be the last conversation. It's really the first conversation. Um, kind of give you an idea of some of the other things we're talking about for the longevity of the program. Um. And so I think Adam's here. So with that, I will stop screen sharing and hand this over. Thank you.
Welcome, Adam.
Thank you very much, uh, select board for the time tonight and the opportunity to present to you. Uh, my name is Adam Karowski. I'm a consultant with the town and been working with Julie for several months now and um, Julie just did an awesome job, even though it was short to, to show this uh, amazing tool. Uh, I've worked with other communities and worked in the town of Arlington and this tool that Julie just showed is uh, super powerful. Um, I think Carlisle's in a wonderful spot in order to leverage uh, the, the financial resources it's put towards GIS as well as implement some really interesting business practices where GIS is kind of a central focus. And one of the tools that Julie showed was the butters tool. And sometimes this is really hard to do. It seems like a simple task, but create a a list of um, mailing labels in order to notify butters. And you'll find as you use this GIS tool more that it's going to affect the way business occurs in town. And that was one reason why we wanted to put together a strategic plan. Um, GIS is more than just a map. It's more than just software. It's actually a business practice. And uh, throughout the meetings we've had with various people in the town, including the public works director, uh, the fire chief, Julian planning, Brian and assessing, uh, folks are already uh, uh understanding and kind of estimating ways that they can use GIS to improve their work and to improve their decision making, which is key. Uh, GIS is just a tool. It's going to help people find data. Uh, display different parts of town, look at different neighborhoods, have a conversation directly with somebody on the phone who calls up about their property. And uh, figuring out a way to kind of integrate this new um, technology and practice into everyday business practices is kind of with the heart of what the GIS strategic plan is about. So I'm not going to put anything in the screen in front of you. Um, our strategic plan is still in very much draft format, but it's also pretty well developed. I would say we're in the uh, you know, later innings of developing this and some of the key components uh, in the strategic plan is a survey that we did. And Julie was instrumental in getting it out. I think we had sixty plus respondents and for a small town, that's amazing. Um, and folks gave uh, really in-depth feedback about how uh, they've used GIS in the past, how they might use it in the future and some of the priorities that they wanted us to focus on in the plan, but also in the development of the data. So GIS is maps, it's data, it's software. Uh, it's business practices and understanding how the town may use it is vital to how we build the GIS. Um, and that's kind of what I'm responsible for and to work with Julie and to work with Brian and to call in the right folks into the room like yourselves in order to kind of review where we're at so that we can either pivot in a new direction or continue to develop on the path that we're on. And it really is a a living document, but it's a living program. Where because it's going to reach so many different departments, there's always going to be this constant feedback from folks, hopefully. Uh, so that they speak up and they say, hey, I got this project coming up. Can you do something to support this effort? And we don't know what that might be. And the GIS um, staff, whether they're part-time or full-time or in a different community or a volunteer or an intern um, need to know how to respond to those ways. So the strategic plan kind of lays out uh, short-term goals, long-term goals, uh, a potential capital budget. Uh, staffing scenarios, which is really unique in, in Carlisle for a small town. Again, there's a lot of GIS experience and I, I, I love it, you know, people are interested and they've done their research and they're, they're asking for more training and I really think this is a ripe environment for GIS to really be successful. So we're trying to imagine the future, right? As we do with these plans. Uh, how do we want something to look in, in three years down the road and um, and really, how do we respond to different scenarios? Um, so as Julie and I developed this plan and we get feedback. Uh, uh, we wanted to present it to you so that you could read it to see if you had any concerns or questions upfront that you really wanted to discuss with us so that we could build that into the plan and build that into the development of the GIS itself. So I'll open the door uh, to the, to the board to respond.
I, I just had a question on your capital budget. It looked like you're anticipating a target total of fifteen thousand dollars a year to kind of upgrade the software and spend on this, this um, but you had an estimated total that, you know, was less than that and, and I'm you know, so I'm, I'm assuming we need to budget in kind of fifteen thousand a year for this software. Is that accurate or what you're targeting?
Yeah, uh, you know, all of this is kind of a, a, a dream and a, a hope and also grounded in reality. So there are some annual maintenance costs that you must maintain in order to keep the software active and keep your act, uh, licenses active, which they have already been for several years. So the town already kind of has that in its um operating budget somewhere. And then this budget also includes some nice to have things to kind of grow your program. Uh, to develop data, um, to do some things that folks have already requested like GPS collection uh, on the public works department. Um, so yeah, I think fifteen thousand dollars is a target. And I was hoping I was going to make somebody smile by coming in under that fifteen thousand dollars with the budget. So um, these are, these are, are best scenarios for the next three years and they can kind of be moved around and be flexible. Uh, but without, you know, prior knowledge of this, I didn't want you to be surprised by expenses that came along the line. So I hope that's a modest budget and I think it's, it's, it's reasonable on the GIS side to be successful.
I guess question for, maybe it's Julie or Ryan. Um, how much of this fifteen thousand is already in the budget? Because I do know that we budget for GIS. Already.
You want me to answer that, Adam?
Yes, please.
Yeah. So this is, this forty five thousand broken down into fifteen thousand over three years is, is additional, right? So we already have uh, we already pay the maintenance um for the licenses that we have, the assessors pay for some of it and planning board pays for some of it. And then we also already have covered the remainder of the two years, last two years of the contracts that we have um, current. um current with Adam and um C I I Technologies. So we have that covered, so that the, the things that are in this forty-five thousand dollar placeholder are like additional. If we need additional software, if we need to get handheld devices for a couple of people at D B Ws, they can go out in the field and, and edit some of the layers in real time. If we need to get another laptop or another license, uh, ArcMap license for uh someone else in Town Hall, it's, it's money, it's, we're just predicting that we might need. Uh, doesn't mean we'll, we will use it. Um, we might use some of it and not all of it, we might use none of it. Um, just kind of a placeholder in case we have needs that we haven't fully anticipated at this time.
Okay, I guess you've been looking at the price of a project, it'd be good to know kind of like, what are we already spending? What, what's additional and kind of what are we, what are we getting for that? Because, you know, the first question is the one I came up with, which is, hey, we're already spending money on this. Isn't that part of this fifteen thousand dollars? Um, it's not, this is all additional, just knowing how that all fits in together um, kind of helps make a, a, a solid decision.
Sure, so I do have a spreadsheet where I outline kind of exactly that um on the G I S project website, but I can share that with the Select Board uh separately as well.
Yeah, I have just also incorporated into this kind of a plan.
Yeah, I agree. That's, that would be pretty easy for us to incorporate into the strategic plan as well as just to identify what's an existing expense versus what might be a future expense.
I'm, I'm more sensitive to uh staff ads, so that's why I asked a question earlier. I mean, you, you posed some potential scenarios of, you know, staff to support it. You know, generally, again, we're very sensitive to adding, you know, full-time new hires. But you did offer some other alternatives, maybe it's not for now, but um, I guess Julie in particular, because you're closer to the workload. On an ongoing basis to support this, do you see the need for the consultant or upscaling the people in town who already know how to use it? Or the town, the shared services model? I mean, you have any thoughts about that?
So I think actually all of the above could be useful. Um, so like I mentioned, we do have some new staff in Town Hall that are primarily hired for other reasons, but have a background in G I S who could be uh become really helpful to this program. We have some staff who could be trained on how to use a handheld to update, to keep our layers maintained. Um, there's me. We also have potentially the ability to look at uh sharing services with neighboring town. Um, and then we might also want to keep a small contract with a consultant for some of the initial kind of data development. Um, like what Adam is doing now with our critical infrastructure layers. So um, I think, I think any of the above, any or all of the above.
So you would start developing that as well as the earlier, the other part, the capital part for the F Y twenty-six budget?
Yeah, so I didn't put anything in F Y twenty-five for that because I wanted to give the town some time to kind of sit with what we're building now and kind of figure out what else they might, you might want to do with it, once you see it and use it and um, you know, kind of understand it.
Thank you.
And I'd like to add two comments to that. Uh, G I S truly is like a value-add tool where folks can become more efficient with their work or um answer questions easier or you might get less concerns from the public because they can answer their own questions. So you'll see some really interesting efficiencies that are gained uh from this. Um, and one thing I, I'm actually seeing in the capital budget that might need uh to be added is training. As Julie mentioned, um, there's some really um uh proficient uh staff members already in G I S in various ways. And bringing them up, bringing their skills up might offset some of the things that David might be concerned about of, of adding full-time staff. And the first few years of a G I S is, is vital. So um spending more upfront, if possible, to really get the right folks in place is gonna really lead to long-term success.
Say is budgeting, you always see the expense, you never see the savings. So, um, which is kind of sort of unfortunate that there's no, no place to put that. But I, I do think that working more efficiently um is, you know, really important for this town, so. Go ahead, Barney.
Um, just following up um on the comment about staffing and efficiencies um, and the importance of the, you know, the next couple of years. Do you foresee that uh once we, we really are using the, these um tools, you know, effectively and, and people are trained and understand them that we would need to have you know, kind of full-time staff or a, uh, continue to have the same level of, you know, support from consultants? Or what, what do you think is the, is the um? What happens when it's, you know, it's running smoothly and so we're, we're in the glide mode as opposed to getting off to the runway?
Julie, do you want me to answer that or would you like to?
Why don't you start?
Okay, yeah, I, I appreciate that question. Thank you very much. And there's a few ways to answer it. And one is G I S does go through these maturity phases. And uh Carlisle is currently in the development phase where things need to be built and organized and planned for. And over time, you do enter various phases that would be called maintenance or management. Where um gliding, I mean, that's a really nice term, but uh ma- management or, or maintenance uh is another way to say that. Because there's always gonna be new asks, it seems. But starting early and starting now and kind of setting the strategic plan to give it guidelines, you can ensure that it doesn't grow too far too fast. Or you can say this is as far as we want to reach with this program because this is what our budget constraints are. So yes, there is a transition in the future. Hmm, will Carlisle ever need a full-time staff member? I, I won't answer that question. I think I'll let Julie answer that. There are very creative ways in order to staff this program um to ensure that it keeps running and that's the key. If you get a big break in time when nobody's managing a G I S, it's gonna, it's gonna fall down uh and become outdated pretty quick. So you always want somebody there to be the, the touch por- person and the, and the, the manager.
All right, I'm going to push us along. It's uh eight o'clock and we have limited time and Julie has another presentation. So I'll start burning question out there. I'd like Julie to continue.
Sure, thank you, Adam, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just gonna screen share again my presentation on M B T A communities. So I know the term M B T A communities might make people feel a little bit grim, a little bit worried, a little bit uncertain. I don't want people to be afraid to ask questions, to talk to me, to reach out to me if they have any concerns. I've heard there's a lot of talk in town, but I actually haven't heard from many people directly myself, so I'm hoping that that will change. Um, I'm also hopeful that, you know, once we're done kind of demystifying things a little bit, people will see that there's a path um to creating another awesome community within the Carlisle community. So you know that there's overlap between the um how, values of housing, public health and natural resources and that there's common ground that we can work within. So um tonight, my main focus is um kind of on the facts, right? So that you know, when you talk to your neighbors, what the facts about how M B T A communities, legislation and guidelines um apply to Carlisle actually are, um, and just so that you have the right information. Um, the guidelines have been updated four or five times uh over the past three years. And so there's a lot of information that's out there that's just not correct anymore. Um, and so the goal tonight would be just to give you the right information. Um, so Carlisle is uh classified as an adjacent small town. Um, that's based on M G L Chapter one sixty-one A. It predates this M B T A communities legislation. Um, what it means is that we have no station area, right? We have no transit services in town and we have a year-round population of less than seven thousand people. So to comply with the M B T A communities uh legislation and guidelines, Carlisle needs to zone for, and I highlight and the word zone here because it's a zoning mandate, it's not a production mandate. We don't have to construct anything. Um, we just have to zone for it. Um, so ninety-five units, that's our uh capacity that we need to provide. That's five percent of the town's twenty-twenty housing stock. Um, which means, you know, we have about nineteen hundred units uh as of the twenty-twenty census. We need to zone for this at a fifteen-unit-an-acre minimum gross density. Um, and it needs to be multifamily by right, so multifamily that's defined as one or more buildings with three or more units or two or more buildings with more than one unit in each building. As of right, uh, that's a term we use a lot in, in zoning and planning. Um, but what that means is that we can do a site plan review process. Um, but we can't, we can't have anything be discretionary. It can't be a special permit, it can't be a variance, it can't be denied. Um, it's a site plan review process. We can have design guidelines um that are part of that. We need to allow housing for families, right? So that means there's no age restriction, no limit on bedroom count or size and no limit on the number of occupants. Um, the bedroom count would be limited by Title V in a town like Carlisle, but not limited by the zoning itself. Um, and the zone can be any size. So I say that, but then I also say a minimum of six-point-three-three acres and that's just purely based on math, right? If we have to provide ninety-five units at fifteen-unit-an acre minimum gross density, that would be our minimum area. And it can be located anywhere in town because we don't have any services or station area, so we don't have to. We, we can locate our zoning district wherever we want. It needs to be a neighborhood-scale district. What this means is it can't be a single development site. Um, I'm trying to get clarity on this for a town like Carlisle, like what that really means. Um, because we have, we do have a lot of large, single development sites in town. And so it's a little bit different uh than, than it would have been like in the community I used to work in. And then we, there's the, the guidelines changed. So now towns can require that up to ten percent of units um be affordable to households earning eighty percent of area median income. So that's the standard capital A affordable that you hear housing advocates talk about. And that, that means that that housing would qualify for our subsidized housing inventory. Um, are there any questions or should I just keep going? Going, okay, um. And again, just feel free to jump in and interrupt me. So uh additional facts, importantly, uh, and this is getting a little wonky, but gross density, it excludes surface water bodies, wetlands and buffers, protected open space and land needed to protect private and public water supplies. So this means like we can't just rezone areas that are wetlands and be like, we're done with this and walk away. Um, the state will just reject that. Um, and then gross, what gross density includes is land occupied by public rights-of-way, recreational, civic, commercial and non-residential uses. So like not to get too technical, but what this means is they're taking into account a larger area than just one lot. So if you, if you found a, like, say we, say we looked at an area that had public rights-of-way in it and, and it was a, like a regular zoning district, which is more than just one property and included streets and things like that. Like all of that area is included in the gross density calculation. Um, and it also means that we can rezone areas that are already built, right? So this is, the goal here is zoning for future development potential. It's not, it's not find a, a piece of land that hasn't been built on and zone that. We can really zone, we can put the zone anywhere, um, almost regardless of what's there now. And importantly, provision of infrastructure is not required. So we don't have to put in water and sewer, we don't have to put in a wastewater plant to comply. We just have to create a zoning district um and some zoning parameters. And any housing that would be built within this zone would be subject to and must comply with both the Wetlands Protection Act and Title V. So this one's really critical for a town like Carlisle because if we had a zone where we allowed fifteen units an acre, um, we might end up with a project that was actually a lot less dense than that based on Title V or other restrictions. So. Penalties for non-compliance. So we have until December twenty-twenty-five to comply. The penalties for non-compliance, there are three grant programs, we just won't be eligible for it all. Um, a couple of them aren't really relevant to Carlisle anyway. Um, and then there are thirteen additional grant programs, which we would be viewed less favorably for. So and, and some of those actually are relevant to Carlisle and we have recently received funding under those grant programs. And they are kind of cross-cutting. They, they get it all different things, economic development, um rural and small-town development. So um, there's a number of different programs that would be, you know, we would be less favorable for funding under. Uh, and then there's the threat from the Attorney General's Office that, you know, they do intend to uh enforce the, the legislation and communities that fail to comply might, might face civil enforcement. So um, I don't know exactly what that means. I do know there are a number of housing advocacy groups in the state that, and there's been at least a few challenges to towns um, under the Fair Housing Act. So something to be mindful of. Okay, and then where we are currently, so from the state's point of view, we are in interim compliance. That's because I filed a piece of paper about a year ago, just like saying we were gonna try something. Um, and that got us interim compliance. Advocacy, I, I reach out and I touch base with staff at the Executive Office of Housing and Livable, Livable Communities like on, almost on a monthly basis, um, just so they know we're taking this seriously. So for example, like if we're trying and we don't quite hit our December twenty-twenty-five compliance deadline, but they know that we're trying things and we've tried things and failed and we're keep, we keep trying and, you know, maybe they will uh not, you know, come after us so quickly. Um, educating trusted voices, that's something that I'm working on right now. So just this info session to you guys and then I've also talked to the Planning Board, the Town Democratic Committee. Um, again, with the main goal of just ensuring that people have the correct information when you're talking to your neighbors, not to like, you know, opinions aside, like just at least have the facts. Um, and then there was a high-density yield plan that was shown at the Planning Board meeting in uh January um on seventy-five West Street. So what I mean by that is uh, they, the property owner actually did some test pits and believes that they have the ability to have septic capacity for all ninety-five units on their one lot. So the Planning Board looked at that, they expect, expressed interest in keeping it on the table as kind of a bookend option, right? So like if we're looking at writing zoning, that would be the, the bookend would be like, okay, we do this all on one property. Now, there's some nuance there because the state says we can't just do it all on one property. They want a neighborhood-scale district. So we'd have to figure out what that really means, but they want to keep that on the table um, the, as a bookend. And the other end would be, right, we don't do anything. Um, and so maybe we end up somewhere in the middle, but we just, we have that to consider as we're looking at how we might write zoning. Um, and then um just, I'm trying to take advantage of the resources that are out there and make some regional connections, like the state is putting a lot of resources behind this effort. Um, so for example, um, there are a number of different free technical assistance programs through CHAPA, which is the Citizens Housing and Planning Association and the Mass Housing Partnership. So through CHAPA, I've engaged with a peer-to-peer free technical assistance. So I'm in touch with planners of other adjacent small towns and other communities that don't have water and sewer infrastructure, but that also have to figure this out. So we're just exchanging ideas. Um, and then there's additional technical, like kind of engineering compliance assistance. And I just heard today that we're being matched up with Bowler Engineering. They have someone on their staff who actually has a, a lot of experience with Carlisle um, who could be very useful to helping us kind of figure out whether areas that we're looking at will, would actually comply. Once you, the, the state has a compliance model, it's this like algorithm. Um, we actually helped beta-test it when I worked in Redding. Um, it's this, it's like a big multi-page spreadsheet where you put in a whole bunch of metrics and then it spits out this, at the end, it like tells you like whether you're, the area you've, you've put in and the zoning that you're considering actually would comply or not. Um, so we can get some help with that. Um, and then of course, there's the grant that we received for the subsurface hydrogeology study. Um, and I'm hoping to finish up kind of scoping that um so that we can get some procurement out and get that started in F Y twenty-five. Does anyone have any questions about this or should I keep going? It's kind of a lot of information. Okay, I have to keep going. Um, so yeah, just some upcoming work, discussion of M B T A communities at Landy's Summit. Um, a tentative info session at the Planning Board meeting and actually that's looking like that might get pushed out to April. And another quick update, the Planning Board decided last night that they want me to create an M B T A communities subcommittee. Um, so I'm very excited about that. Um, and I'm hoping to kind of get that going uh at some point soon. So I just have like an interim step and, and a group of people I can bounce ideas off of. Um, it would be subject to open meeting law. And then I do give monthly updates to the Planning Board. And um, the things I talked about in the last slide are here. And then I'm just looking at some potential bylaw ideas and sites um with the Planning Board and then also that subcommittee that I Um, with the Planning Board and then also that Subcommittee that I set up during the spring. And all the information is on the town website under the Planning Board. Um, page, I think that's my last slide, yeah. So.
So this is a huge, huge topic and. Thank you to Julie for summarizing it. What the goal here was, was to provide the Select Board with a very high level. Uh, intro discussion and then ask you, um, what you wanted to investigate with this in the future or what you wanted to monitor as some of the boards and committees work through this. And hear it directly from Julie. Uh, we know we can't fit this in tonight for a longer conversation about. What to do with this and where, but it it should spark some. Some thoughts. Um, so if Julie feels rushed, it's because I was making sure that we, you know, we kept on. On time and task here, but, um, incredible presentation, Julie. Thank you.
Yeah, it's great. Um, I I just, I realize you don't have time and I don't want to be the source of delay. But for future considerations, Julie. And Ryan and the board. The uh, the West Street Development, I realize that, you know, you're working through the legal ramifications, but. At some point, if I'm not mistaken, the Reichenback family wants to do something, so. If we dither, they go to something else, right? So, and I. I view their proposal as a friendly offer to try to help us. Um, so what is actually? Is that? Have to be driven by a bylaw change and if that's a. What we need is that something that has to wait to fall town meeting? I mean, I'm a little murky on sort of where that goes.
So I can try to give a quick answer. Um, so David, so they, the Reichenback, um. The property owner, they have an application actually before the Planning Board right now for a conservation cluster. Um, which is something that we have in our bylaw, um, currently, so they're, they're continuing with that process. They had just done a lot of site investigations for that process and they thought, well, we've done all this work, let's just do a little bit more. Um, a few more test fits, a little bit more engineering analysis and figure out if we might also be able to make MBTA communities work. And that that high-density yield plan, it was vet, it wasn't vetted by anybody. It's literally just been shown to the Planning Board, so it hasn't gone through Board of Health or any local. Uh, permitting process or anything, and we also don't have the zoning for it yet, right? So it's just right now kind of an idea. Uh, but they do have another plan before the Planning Board, um, and they're working on that simultaneously.
Right, so that could go first and then we might lose the opportunity to. Make it an MBTA qualifying property, right? So. Again, yes, I understand that. I, not much we can do about that, but then the broader question, Julie, is. Whenever the Planning Board finishes sorting itself out. Is this a fall town meeting? I mean, what's the horizon for? Considering the zone, at the end of the day, we've got to come up with some zoning bylaw changes to keep on track, right? Is that? Fall of twenty-four, spring of twenty-five, what, what's up with, you know?
So I had put together a whole outreach plan. It's on the MBTA Communities webpage that kind of envisioned that we might try something at Spring Town Meeting next year. But if we're, if if with the Subcommittee, I'm hopefully hoping, planning board's hoping to set up and. And all this work and the subsurface hydrogeostudy and all that, if things start to seem like they could be. Proposed or real sooner, we we could maybe aim for fall town meeting. The thing about that is. Like backing out of that, there's a whole public hearing process that the Planning Board have to have, and then socializing and making sure we get all the right stakeholders at the table. And so, you know, I don't, wouldn't want to necessarily rush things, um, but I also don't want to say that that's not on the table, because I don't know that yet.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Thank you. Um, any other questions? Because we are a little past eight-ten and we would like to have our meeting with TSAC. All right, but this will be coming again. Um, this was, this was again, an intro. So that you have, you have some notion and have time now to go back to the website, look at what you need to look at. Everybody has access to, if additional questions, and we will be also talking about this at our last Land Use Summit, so. Uh, to try to get us up and. Up and going.
And then, and thank, then thank you, Julie, because I think the effort to make sure. We all have the facts, you know, about what this is and what it isn't, is really important. Um, not just for the Select Board, but for other people in town, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Great one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. All right, meeting with TSAC, um. I have to get my cheat sheet back.
I don't see Tom unless he's mislabeled.
Um. But I do see some other TSAC members. I did see, uh. Well, now she's gone. Oh, there she is, Laura. She, you moved from my left side to my right side of my screen. I, are you prepared?
Hi, I'm hoping Tom shows up because, you know, he had his. Agenda lined up, but, um, I can meanwhile pull up what I think he was gonna say. I don't know where.
There is a, there is a slideshow here. I don't know if, I mean, a PowerPoint if, uh.
I can show it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That sounds like, though, so I wonder.
Yeah.
Yeah, I talked to him today, so.
Hmm, should we put it off and come back?
Yeah.
TA report until Tom shows up if he doesn't push up too lo, too close to eight-thirty?
That sounds good. Thank you.
Ryan, you wanna? Or we could do some of these other things. One-day liquor license approval, how about that? That, that we can get. Done. All right, I would entertain a motion, uh, that the Select Board vote to approve the application submitted by the. Gleason Public Library for the issuance of a one-day special license to sell beer and wine at an event to be held on March fifteenth. Twenty twenty-four during the hours of six-thirty PM through nine-thirty PM. At Twenty-Two Bedford Road, Carlisle, Mass, subject to the applicant providing proof of host liquor liability coverage and police detail arrangements. Uh, normally, and I didn't see the application, normally we don't vote on these. Uh, without having the police detail arrangements already. In hand, but, and then they, they can't do the, uh, they can't do the liability coverage until they get their license.
I believe that were asked, um. You can approve it pending their approval.
Yeah, we can, but.
I mean, if I'm looking at the right one, the police chief signed it.
Okay, well, I'm probably, oh, you know what? It's a separate document on the thing. Here it is. Sorry, I take it back. I see it. Yep. Never mind. Sec, do I have a second?
Second.
Um. Any discussion? All right, so roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What, L.I.?
Read I.
L.I.
Great. I, I will actually be, um, talking about this in my liaison report as well. What else do we have on our agenda that we could take care of very fast?
Some thirty.
Uh.
I move to transfer land in the public burial ground at Green Cemetery described as follows. Deed eight-one-six lot, deed three-six-six graves one. And two to Mary M. Harkins, two-fourteen Virginia Farm Lane.
So.
And I move to.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead, Nathan. We can do both at the same time.
And I move to correct the name on deed eight-one-four. Uh, from Nancy and Edward Lee to Sherry Lee.
So second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
What, L.I.?
Read I.
Snell, I.
Has anybody tried to, um, text, um?
Yeah, I just, I texted Tom about two minutes ago.
Okay. All right, so that's taken care of. Um.
Minutes?
Minutes. Uh, I know that there were some amendments, um, to them, um.
So, yeah, I just had on the January twenty-third ones. I don't know if you're talking about the ones I noted, but.
Yeah, but let's start with, um, January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
That was. Remember, we remember that meeting really well.
Uh. Is there a motion? Well, how do we want to do this? Um.
Yeah, I guess.
One at a time, or can we take them all at the same time, except for the twenty-third of the, uh, twenty-third of January twenty-four?
I'm all right taking all of them except that last one.
All right, when, do you have the date? You want me to?
You want me to move that?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, I move, uh, that we accept the, um. Minutes as, uh, written in the packet for, should I, I just put them all together except the last?
Yeah.
For, uh, the, uh, Select Board meeting with the Finance Committee on January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. The, um, Select Board meeting with the School Committee on September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three. The Select Board meeting on, um, October tenth, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, and I think, is there one more?
One more.
The Select Board meeting on October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Did anybody have any comments? So roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Uh, Brown abstained. I wasn't here for, it seems like the minutes that weren't done were all the meetings I didn't attend.
Okay.
What, L.I.?
Read I.
Snell, I.
Great, and then there are the minutes of, uh, January twenty-third. Twenty-twenty-four. And I understand, David, you had some comments. I'm not sure if they ever, um, did those comments get to Gretchen and did the minutes get amended?
I did give them to Gretchen. I didn't cross-check about the amendment, I have to say.
Okay.
At this point, I'm willing to assume that they've been incorporated.
Okay, Barney, did you have any other comments that you wanted to make?
Well, just, um. One about, and David, was this one that you sent to, um, Gretchen about the, the reference to the, uh, meeting with the Deer Committee?
I did not make that.
Okay, well, because it, it says, um, that we, that we met with the Deer Committee, but in fact, it was not the Deer Committee, you know, it was the, um. It was the, uh, BU research team.
Right.
That were presenting their report on the deer study, and so I, I did send some language to Gretchen on that one, that change.
Okay.
Um, and the other, boy, I'm trying to remember what the other one was.
Well, you know what?
Oh, oh, I know. The other one was about, um, just the, um, the, um. What are we calling it? The new name for the, uh, the pedestrian and pathway or public safety committee or whatever. You know, we, we said that we wanted a different name than calling it the Safety Committee. And and that's not included in the minutes. Again, not a huge deal, but.
Let's hold, uh, I would like us to hold these minutes then until our next meeting and Gretchen can make these, um. Uh, corrections and we then can just, um. Approve them. Once they're corrected, we all have a chance to reread them. Okay?
Yep.
All right, so minutes are taken care of. Were any questions about the warrants? All right, none? Uh. It's eight-twenty-five and eight-thirty, we're supposed to start our work on the budget and I, there's no Tom, so. How do we?
Did, did, Barney, are you trying to call Tom?
I am.
This morning, he was. Sending, we all had the link and he was telling me it was gonna be online and whatnots. This is really unlike him. I mean, I'm happy, we reviewed the PowerPoint at our meeting in January. I'm happy to run through it. Um. I have a, a sense of, you know, clear what. He wants to talk about.
Hey, Tom?
Oh, good.
Hi, uh, listen, we're, we're, the Select Board is in session and we're, we're, are you, can you jump on? Okay, all right, bye-bye. Okay, you heard that, so I, I don't know why he wasn't on, but he's coming.
Okay.
Well, this is, you know, he'll have a nice short window to.
Yeah.
And, uh.
You'll just have to kind of give us a.
Yeah.
Do you want to start, Laura?
Sure, I, I don't have the, I can't see the PowerPoint, but, um.
Come on, this is like. T. Swift coming to the Super Bowl. It's fun. Let me just call it up here.
I think we might want to jump. Uh. Well. I was gonna say to the Black Earth proposal and to the other, you know, with, but.
I know Tom wanted to give an update on the curbside con, curbside composting, and I'm also. Very gung-ho on subsidized compost bins for residents, so that's a big priority is getting. Composting down and bringing our, uh, tonnage down. All right, let's see what we get. He should be on soon, uh. Here we go. Okay. So. You want to kind of go down from there?
I don't see him.
Can you, okay, can you see the PowerPoint?
Yep.
Yes, so the good news is in twenty-twenty-two, our tonnage did come down from twenty-twenty-one, ten percent. So far, the twenty-twenty-three numbers don't show a big decrease from twenty-twenty-two. So we don't know exactly what. Is going on with that. Um, so then he's talking about what are possible reasons why the tonnage hasn't come down. I think. You know, we, we need to keep doing what we're doing and and get more people on board and composting and other ways to bring it down. Um. So. Yeah, he's, he's also mentioning, you know, potential opportunities with organics, kitchen scraps. And glass crushing. It states says, you know, about twenty-two percent of, uh. Uh, waste flow is due to, uh, food scraps, so I'm sure we could do better with that. Um, do you want to go the next one and? Is he on yet? Nope. Okay. So here we go. Uh. So, yeah, um. The, it's food scraps and composting is our biggest area for opportunity for reduction. Our efforts to date have not significantly increased. Well, we haven't really had a big campaign, so. Um, he is, Tom's been actively working to expand the curbside pickup. To Carlisle, and I think Black Earth has some people in the wings they, they think would be jumping on board. And as I mentioned, I'm hoping to get a bunch of sign-ups for subsidized. Compost bins at Earth Day and maybe the Seed-to-Cheese Garden Club activity. But it comes down to whether or not we have the, um, funding this year to pay for that and, uh. I'm gonna put together a proposal for. TSAC for Thursday and then also, um, bring it to the Environmental Sustainability. Committee to see if they have any funding. Um, because so far, people I've polled, you know, eight out of ten would like compost bins. So that's something we're working on. I know Tom met with FinCom to talk about the. Subsidies and funding for curbside pickup and Ryan probably can knows more about this than I do. All the details, but it seemed like there were different ways that there could be additional funding. He was hoping to, what, subsidize the first thirty for this year? So, um. I think, you know, it's good to come from different, oh, good, excellent, six hundred dollars in support of this effort. Oh, and Christina, so yeah, I haven't reached out to you about the compost bins yet, but I will be just, uh, glad you're down there. Um. So, that's kind of a big push from our end and, um.
I just want to clarify, Laura, you're saying compost bins, you mean the Black Earth compost bins?
No, I'm sorry, I mean household, home compost bins, outdoor compost bins. A lot of towns subsidize, um, compost bins, and we have currently, um. Had new age ones, but many municipalities in Massachusetts. Have earth machine compost bins as well, and the idea is to have both options available to residents. So they can be compost, composting at home, take some of it out of the Black Earth compost. take some of it out of the Black Earth compost bins at the le, at the transfer station, or Tom's on, and then also get people who are currently throwing their garbage in the dumb, you know, dumpsters to start composting, so sorry, I I wasn't clear on that, so that's a big uh sort of project of mine, hi, Tom.
Hi, how you doing? I was on the phone listening to you, but for some reason, you couldn't hear me, so now I'm on a computer.
Okay, so Tom, we're really out of time, but I do need you to quickly cover the Black Earth proposal, please.
Sure, that was really the main reason for meeting tonight, um, basically, um, our committee is planning to uh focus on all areas of kitchen scrap recycling, we really would like to encourage as much as possible. Currently, we've been doing home composting, we intend to do more of that, we've been encouraging people to go to the transfer station, but the Black Earth alternative, we believe to be the most promising in terms of really signing up a lot of folks. A lot of other municipalities have done very successful with that. So what we like to do basically is to uh take them up on their offer and subsidize users at thirty-six dollars per user they sign up. The way it would work is that the first fifty uh of, kind, once they have fifty clients, they'll begin service, so there's no financial commitment until they get fifty. Once they begin service, we would provide them with thirty-six times fifty or eighteen hundred dollars, which they will in turn use to subsidize uh the part of the fees of the residents for the first six months. And then uh so so the TSAC would fund that out of its current budget, and then we were looking for support from FinCom uh at at Ryan's suggestion to cover an overage, because we'd like to get many more than fifty customers. And uh I spoke, I I did go to FinCom, they asked me to bring that to the Select Board, to get get your support for that. But basically, we would like to make this a major initiative to to really get as much organic recycling as we can.
So I'll just add uh that, you know, in in towns that are using Black Earth, um, you know, what what happens is it it means that you, you know, are collecting it in your kitchen in a container, and then you're bringing it out and putting it at, you know, at the end of your driveway uh the days that Black Earth comes and picks it up, so it completely um eliminates anything that would go through our transfer station, uh the food scrap collection there, and thereby saving us money.
Right, it has a one-year return on investment, the average cost of of the organic recycling, organic and solid waste is about thirty dollars per year per resident, so for that thirty-six dollars sign up, we we get our money back in a year, and then as long as the resident continues to do that in future years, the town will save money every year.
So I thought, um, I I may, I may have misunderstood, I thought that there uh that we were also talking about a program of subsidizing um providing bins that, so that people are just keeping it locally uh on their property and and not having somebody drive around and pick up the compost, so is it?
The Black Earth program, what the thirty-six dollars actually does is cover the cost of the curbside bin that the, that uh Black Earth provides.
Along with?
Yeah.
That provides a subsidy for the curbside bin and some kitchen uh stuff as well.
But Nathan, I think what you're asking, let me see if I'm right, is um what what Laura was referring to, which is this, the um arranging with Black Earth to do curbside pickup will not uh get in the way of, or won't stop us from continuing to encourage people to to buy composters for their home, to do their own home composting outside, and we're still talking about the um using some of the um TSAC budget to provide those uh town, those home composting systems at a at a reduced cost. But it's a very small, it's a very small number of people that, you know, we've actually been able to encourage to do that, but but doesn't mean we won't continue.
So, do we think that people are more likely to put a bin at the end of their driveway than they are to put the scraps in a, in a bin that's on their own property?
I I I'll tell you, from my personal experience, yes, um, because I did have Black Earth come pick up for me. Um, but because I can't put um avocado seeds in my bin at home, I can't put bones and fat, and, you know, as many paper towels as I do, or my cardboard, you know, my soil pizza boxes, so I sent all that off to Black Earth once a week, and then they um stopped because they didn't have, during COVID, um, they didn't have enough drivers, but I.
I see, so Black Earth, Black, Black Earth will take all kitchen waste, including meats and things like that?
Yes, and they do, when they they gave, they give me back a ten-pound bag of compost, and I can tell you, no um tomato or, you know, um melon seeds then grow in my um garden when I spread their compost, as opposed to when I spread my compost, because I'm never able to get it hot enough at home to kill everything that I need to kill, so um I I've tried the home composting, I'm all for the Black Earth personally, and it's worth every penny, in my opinion.
They also offer other services, for example, if you're a Black Earth customer, you can, for a few dollars, a home depot-sized bag, uh recycle yard waste, uh, you know, grass clippings, leaves and things, so there are other services you get if you choose to have them as your organic recycler.
It would seem that in order to, for it to be truly sustainable, there would need to be a lot of customers in in Carlisle that did it to kind of offset the fuel for driving around and picking up the bins.
That that actually is is a misconception, Nathan, um, a lot of municipalities have studied this, and the additional uh cost of gasoline and fuel, uh, sorry, the pollution effect of gasoline and fuel relative to the savings of the organic waste, it's a hundred to one proposition, yes, there is, trucks are dirty, but the landfill gases, or incinerated gas, whatever, are a hundred times X, well, all the municipalities have looked at that, so this is not, environmentally, Black Earth is the way to go, um.
Well, there's a medium ground there, though, Tom, right, you you know, that's kind of an all-or-nothing thing, the medium ground is I have my com, co, con, compost bin outside of my house, and I'm putting my compost there, so there's no, it's not going into landfill, it's not going into, you know, um, waste energy, i- it's not being carted anywhere, it's staying right on my property.
Oh, no, we're all in an all approaches, we certainly want to continue to encourage home composting, that's not, we're not trying to take away anything, we want to get more folks doing it, currently, only about five to ten percent of folks in Carlisle are doing organic recycling, we need to get that other eighty or ninety percent.
And 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 Black Earth is required, needs fifty, for them, economically, they need fifty of us at least um to sign on for the pickup, to make it.
Correct, but we, they would like to get hundreds of customers, and if they're able to do that, the rate goes down substantially, the initial twenty dollars per month becomes fifteen, and ultimately could be as low as ten if they got, you know, like five hundred customers, and they've had that kind of success in other communities, so it, curbside pickup seems to be the most attractive option for many folks.
And Tom, you're looking at this as just kind of a trial, and then then we'll reassess in a year, once we have some data on it?
Yes, I mean, if we only get fifty customers, it's hard for me to understand how they'll sustain it in the long run, because just the business case, fifty times two hundred dollars a year, it's ten thousand dollars to transit Carlisle, you know, fifty weeks a year, so I, in order to be sustainable, I think we got to get eventually a couple hundred customers. And once it happens, then I think it will continue and grow.
So what, what's the ask tonight, are we, are we making a?
Yeah, the ask, basically, um, uh, TSAC is planning to really push this hard, and therefore, we'd like to sign up more than fifty customers, you know, potentially two hundred or three hundred customers, and we don't have the funds to provide the thirty-six dollar subsidy beyond that, so we don't want to tell the fifty-first customer who signs up, you know, you you have to, we're not going to give you that subsidy, so we're looking for a commitment for those additional funds beyond customer fifty. And what Ryan had suggested was, it's, you know, again, ultimately, this will save the town money, Ryan has suggested perhaps we DPW might have excess funds, but if they didn't, he wanted the backup of the FinCom to use the reserve fund, you know, to cover any deficit we have in that regard, and that, again, we took that to FinCom, they want to hear the board, Select Board, way in on that, basically.
And and you're saying that it, that could be as high as another eighteen hundred dollars?
No, it, well, if we got two hundred, if we, we'd like to get three hundred customers in in the next year and a half, if we got three hundred customers, the extra two fifty are nine thousand dollars, so that's a potential thing. Now, that's a, that's a stretch goal, and, you know, along the way, we could certainly decide to stop the subsidy at some point. At some point, the DPW is going to start saving money, ag- again, they're going to save thirty dollars per resident per year, so depends how fast we get those sign-ups, and so, and and what Ryan would like to see is the money flow in, as 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 well as the money flowing out, so he'd like to see, you know, we've got a hundred customers, and truly, we we've reduced tonnage by, you know, X tons, and the thirty dollars per customer savings is real, w- once that happens, then it's going to be a self-funding process. So we view it as a trial for eighteen months, and we'd like to have the backup in the event that we are successful, and it takes a while to get the have confidence that the savings are occurring at the transfer station.
And so is there a maximum, uh, Tom, that uh is the dollar amount that um the town might have to kick in in addition?
Practically speaking, I mean, the number we used was nine thousand dollars, but um practically speaking, you know, we're not going to sign up three hundred customers in one, you know, in in one month, most likely, at the FinCom meeting, we estimated, you know, maybe it's a two or three thousand dollar liability um in the next six to nine months, and again, we clearly can stop doing subsidy at any point in time, so if if there's some delay in the revenue coming back to the transfer station, we could decide, okay, we've got a hundred customers, we'll stop subsidizing at that point. But we intend to actually, at the transfer station event, associated with the ESC event, to actually have a computer there and and to be trying to sign folks up on the spot, same thing, if we have a table at the sustainability site, so we're going to be really aggressively trying to sign folks up.
Okay, we are running out of time, folks, it is eight forty-five, we're, you know, fifteen minutes behind schedule, and we still have a lot on our agenda, so I'm going to just do a straw poll, and if you just want to say, you know, in favor, not in favor, or, you know, uh, want to talk about it more, um, we can get a sense of our, our committee for the uh TSAC. You know, do it in alphabetical order. Put you on the spot, Mark.
Yeah, well, um, I'm in favor of um supporting uh this effort, uh, and I think that um you know, I, I, I think it would be prudent to say something like, you know, up to five thousand dollars, rather than potentially, you know, having supported it, and to, and let's say it's phenomenally successful, I think at a certain point, the new folks that sign up, they just pay the full fare, and we're not going to subsidize them anymore, so uh, if if we, so anyway, I'm as, I'm supportive of of uh trying to do this program.
I just want to also make clear about the subsidy, it's a one-time subsidy, it's for thirty-five dollars per sign-up, and essentially, what it's doing is it's buying them, the little bin that that Black Earth uses, so it's not like it's, you know, forever and ever, amen, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Correct, one time.
Yeah, okay. Um, who's next, Nathan?
Uh, you see, so, so I support it, but I have more questions, right, it it's, you know, um, understanding a little bit more about kind of what we think that that final number is. Why not make it part of the budget process? Um, and, you know, so I just have, I just have more, more questions.
Okay.
So I guess it's the third option that you said.
Uh, well, would you support, Barney had the idea of putting a cap on it, so with that, are you in support of that as well?
Uh, I think so.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I still wonder just about the whole budget process, right?
I, yeah, I get it, David?
Um, certainly, um, I'm supportive, you know, strategically, I'm definitely supportive of all these waste reduction efforts. The um, I I guess I'm like, Nathan, I have some questions about, is this a twenty-five budget ask? It's not a twenty-four budget ask, right?
It it is a current, it's a current year budget ask, that's correct.
Oh, it is, okay.
It it ba- basically, the, we want to push this at the coming event, you know, in April and the event, and and if if we can't push it, then we can't push it, it may go away, the opportunity.
Well, I mean, we got to find some money then, and that would be the the first fifty at thirty-five dollars or something like that?
Well, no, we've covered that, TSAC has the budget for that, it's if we do beyond fifty.
But the, oh, I see, okay, and that thirty-five is just the bin, and then they have to pay the annual fee themselves?
The 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 client, the the customer pays the annual fee forever, from this point forward, that thirty-six dollars they receive as a discount from Black Earth, normally, they wouldn't receive that discount.
Yeah, you know, I mean.
Sorry, how many, how many bins is TSAC?
Fifty, we're covering the fifty.
And how much, and how much is that?
Eighteen hundred dollars.
So that, they already have the money for that, so there's no objection on my end for letting them spend that money on that, but yeah, I mean, I guess, given Sustainability Day is in April, right, sometime, and uh Earth Day probably, and then budget is coming soon, I, you know, I guess, yeah, I'm in favor of doing that, and like Nathan, I think at that point, we have to sort of think about long-term, do we want to offer some subsidy to people, do we need to continue to offer subsidy, I guess that's the question. But I'm in favor of promoting it, certainly. I don't know if that answers your question. Are you, Kate, are you looking for budget authority, or just do we support the concept generally, or?
Well, you know.
Can I offer, Kate, sorry to interrupt, but I'm just noticing that, you know, Christina has put into the text, the chat, that um the ESC uh has approved, she says, six hundred dollars from their budget to help uh pay the cost of this curbside initiative, so uh Dave, um, Tom, is that on, is that on top of the um the fifty that the TSAC budget is going to cover?
Yes, we learned about that a few days, I think about a week ago, and yeah, that would cover another fifteen or so people, yes.
Okay. So it would be, you know, I, another way to go is we say, uh, you know, because it's, we're talking about, I mean, what? May eighteen hundred dollars if it was up, if it was up to a hundred people, we could just, we could say the town would provide the subsidy to the first hundred people. And and then we leave it at that for now, and see what we get.
Sure, I mean, the thing we really don't want to do is
That's a pretty squirrel, man.
We don't want to be sitting there having, you know, and have the, to turn off the, you know, the fifty-first person who signs up, you don't get the subsidy on that day. We're really concerned, and we're we're going to have a very aggressive push that day, and we want to get as many as we can, you know, so that's, that's the tough part, you know, after that, could one, if we're so successful, we get a hundred people, could one stop subsidizing at that point? Sure, I mean, that's a possibility.
And, I mean, again, it sounds like we probably need another time for this, but would it be like, if you get the subsidy, you sort of agree, maybe you can't make it binding, but at least raise your hand and say, yes, I agree, I'll keep the service for at least a year? I mean, we don't have people taking the bin and then saying, I don't really want to pay for the service, right?
Well, that's more, w- w- once they actually sign up, they haven't yet made a commitment. Once there are fifty sign-ups, then they actually cut a contract with Black Earth.
Okay, so they need at least fifty to come.
Correct, yeah.
I get you, okay, all right.
Is that contract for a year?
I believe it's for a year, I think you have two options, you have weekly pickup or bi-weekly pickup, there are two different rates for that.
Okay, Travis?
I, I like the discussion here, I have many of the same questions, and I I generally, I mean, I'm supportive, and I really like the approach that you're taking of thinking about the fiscal impacts and trying to, you know, have programs that then reduce that impact, I mean, in in addition to having the environmental impact, I mean, that's I think how we should look at it, and I guess my only addition would be, I I think if we support this, we should definitely put a time limit on the support, or make sure it's reviewed, so it's not an ongoing subsidy for this program. I mean, it should be reviewed before we, you know.
Uh, and so, uh, I I'm taking myself out of order, but um.
Kate, we gotta, we gotta bring this back, this is.
Yeah, okay, well, I was just going to say, um, I'm in support, and I would support um uh authorization of up to twelve, since I see the six hundred, and it's eighteen hundred, that they're, they're starting with an additional twelve hundred of free cash, uh, if they get a hundred um signatures, you know, in for Sustainability Day, so.
I think that's workable, I mean.
Okay, so that, uh, because the uh FinComs here, they, I think they were interested in hearing this discussion, but I think we have to end it at this point. So thank you very much for your presentation, and uh we have to be moving on.
So we'll take, we'll make a decision on this at our next meeting?
We can take a vote, or, you know, what, I, I'm sure this will be coming up, yeah.
At our next meeting, okay.
All right, um, budget. Town meeting review with the FinCom and first order of business is close the annual town meeting warrant.
Does Lynn have to open the FinCom meeting?
Um, not for us to close the warrant, but then after that, soon as we do that, she can open her meeting. So, um, do I have a?
I move to close the annual town meeting warrant called for Monday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. in the Corey Auditorium in the Carlisle Public School, eighty-three School Street, Carlisle, Massachusetts.
Second.
All right, um, any discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Arnold, I.
Thank you. Roll call.
Brown, I.
More ally.
Read I.
Now I.
Okay, the only comment is that we do have one citizens petition that we did say we would extend the deadline to the twenty-seven. For them to get their signatures. Okay, budget.
So the the shape of this, just to to help organize it, Scott was going to give an update on the ARPA situation, which I think is important for understanding capital. And then I was going to give a quick overview of where draft two of the budget is. And then talk about some decision points and some modeling and then open it up to the select board. Is the FinCom is looking for additional direction on the next step, cutting priorities and other items to get down to. I think what we're starting to call guideline. So Scott.
Um, does does FinCom need to open their meeting first or?
Yes.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'd like to call the FinCom meeting to order and take a roll call, please. Everybody on the phone?
Bernstein here.
Yeah, Gio here.
Deleger.
Leoman here.
Liang here.
Lipinski here.
Showberg here.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay off camera only because I keep cutting out, so I apologize. Okay, we're good to go. Did you want me to make any opening statements or we'll just do the ARPA and then we can jump into the budget and then I can kind of give some some of the summations that the FinCom has come back with?
Yep, I'd like, if we could, just to help organize, but of course, I can be overruled, Scott, and then I will do quick budget update and then turn it over to Lynn.
Sounds good. Ryan, did you get the updated sheet I sent this evening? Can you share that or do you want me to share it? Because what I'm going to do is I'm going to give a, just a very quick overview of where we stand in terms of available ARPA funds remaining as of this meeting. Um, we, as an ARPA committee, met last week to review project updates that we received from the project owners. Um, coming out of those updates, we have some recommendations for some funding adjustments that we'll go through. Um, and then finally, we wanted to briefly uh, speak with the select board about our role as a committee going forward, given that we're in the final year of ARPA commitments and we're at the last of the funds. So uh, that's what I want to cover quickly. Let me start with a summary of the ARPA funding. So again, this is the final year to commit funds, the final calendar year to commit funds, ARPA funds. The town had received one million, five hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars in ARPA funding to date across thirty-six projects. We've allocated one million, five hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. And that's a little bit more than what we're allocated because we also have had to date, project closeouts and clawbacks of unexpended funds totaling fifty thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars. And that number has changed from what I originally sent out. Um, we had two closeouts today that are signed off on. One was for the Gleason R T U, which returned twenty-four thousand dollars due to a rebate. Um, and then the the town telephone system also, we had two thousand move over from pending project closeout to actual project closeout. So as of this meeting, walking in here, we have officially thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars in ARPA funds available to be allocated. Uh, the recommendations on the next page would free up an additional fifty-one thousand dollars in ARPA funding. And there is a one pending project closeout. I just need a signature on that would free up another hundred and sixty-two dollars. So pending those two items, we would have just under ninety thousand dollars in ARPA funds remaining. Um, we still have contingency funds that the committee wants to keep as contingency funds and I I can speak to that, but that's an additional fourteen thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-five cents. That is not that is separate from the eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. The big open question at this point, there are a couple of projects that might return a small amount of funds, less than ten K in total. The big open question is the grant elevator, which has approved ARPA funding of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, we're just waiting on the the town elevator study, which I believe is expected in the next month. To understand if that amount is sufficient for the grant elevator funding or if that project requires a magnitude uh, difference in more funding, do we use this funding? Do we supplement it? That's an open question. So depending on what the outcome of that study is, either this money will be used for that or potentially it could be returned if if the decision was made that that should be better funded through a the town town warrant. So we're just waiting on that. Uh, going into page two, so coming out of these project updates, um, we have four funding adjustments that would require the select board to vote on to change what has been approved. And I can quickly go through those, but before I do, I just wanted to see if there were any questions on the funding summary. Okay, so these are four requests that came out of the updates. The first two uh, came from the the Council on Aging and Human Services and they're they're asking to take two thousand that had been approved for uh, senior home heating assistance that they have extra and move it over to uh, rental assistance because rents have increased and the original amount approved of fifty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars is not sufficient. And they want to move two thousand basically from one project to the next. Um, these, the ARPA committee reviewed that request and we supported that request. And doing that would just require two votes from the select board as shown here. Um, and that would be to a decrease the senior home heating assistance project by two two thousand dollars and to increase the rental assistance for seniors in need project by two thousand. Um, the other one, uh, the 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 Board of Health is, has funding remaining for the organization of future clinics for vaccination and boosters based on the clinics they've run to date and their schedule for upcoming clinics. Uh, they believe that they can return or they expect to return eleven thousand dollars uh, of that funding. And so as a committee, we discussed that we we recommend we reduce the amount approved by that eleven thousand dollars and that we do have the contingency fund if, for example, they wanted to run an additional clinic or uh, you know, the original estimate was off. We do have contingency funds that we could use as the ARPA committee to uh, support any delta there. So our view is let's just reduce it by that amount now, free up those funds and and move forward. And then the final recommendation is for the town hall records management. Um, and I Ryan has spoken to this, that project is much more complex and time-consuming than expected. And so looking at what he can realistically get done in in a reasonable timeframe, he wants to reduce a return forty thousand dollars of what was originally approved at the hundred thousand dollars just to to keep the scope of that project uh, uh, in in an area that'll work within the ARPA funding. So those are the four recommendations. And again, if you if you vote on all these, that would free up tonight an additional fifty-one thousand dollars in ARPA funds.
In addition to the the number you showed on the first page?
Well, so, yeah, if you if you go back to the first page, um, so again, we have thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty available now. Between the fifty, if you approve the fifty-one thousand, that would be added. And then once I get the signature on this closeout, you'd you'd arrive at the eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And then we can, let's, let's cover off that and then I'll I'll talk about the last recommendation from the ARPA committee.
So could I get a motion? Would you put that back on the on the thing so that they can just read the motions from there? Thanks. Uh, so they, the, these are four motions that I would like to entertain.
Do you want to take them all together or one at a time?
Together.
Yeah, I think together is right.
Okay. You're going to do that, David?
Sure.
I move that we decrease ARPA funding for senior home heating assistance by two thousand dollars to ninety-six thousand dollars total. I further move that we increase ARPA funding for rental assistance to seniors in need by two thousand dollars to fifty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars total. I further move that we decrease funding for organization of future clinics for vaccinations and boosters by eleven thousand to thirteen thousand dollars total. And finally, I move that we decrease ARPA funding for town hall records management by forty thousand dollars to sixty thousand dollars total.
Second.
Great. Any discussion questions? Roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
More ally.
Read I.
Now I.
Right.
Great, thank you. Um, the last piece that we wanted to talk about was the role of the committee going forward and the ARPA request process in general. Um, given that we're down to what I would consider the final funds remaining and the fact that as a committee, if you remember back in August or the summer, you know, we mentioned we wanted to keep a certain amount of funds to do certain projects and and leave the rest to the discretion of the select board. We've done the things we wanted to do as a committee. Um, and the requests we're receiving now and those are, there's a summary of those on the sheet. Um, you know, they're, they're valid projects, but as a committee, I think when when we look at these requests coming in now, we look at them under the under the umbrella of, well, how would this fit in with the with the select board and the in the FinCom's prioritization at this point? So I think as a committee, there's two things. One, uh, we'd like to recommend that we we close the the open application process that's currently being offered and is available on the town website, that we no longer accept ARPA requests as a committee. And that furthermore, um, for the remaining requests, that really those are at the discretion of the select board. So our committee would 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 still be involved from administration to answer questions to manage the existing projects and make sure everything gets expended and spent properly. But as a committee, um, our recommendation is that we no longer receive or recommend requests.
So Scott, I mean, let me try to translate. So you're saying that this, you would say no to Center Park and no to Storage Shed and?
No, we haven't, we haven't taken a position on those and we haven't, aside from being presented with them, we haven't discussed them. I think it's and and Kate can chime in here wearing the other hat. It's, you know, if that was a priority to the select board in light of the other priorities for this money, we could support it, but it's not something that you know, we feel like we're we're in a position to recommend or not recommend.
So let me ask, well, let me leave that. Let me go differently. You're you're reporting that after we just voted the fifty-one thousand that we we've got, you know, I don't know, eighty-eight thousand, like, the thing's not up now, but eighty-eight thousand, and then there's another fourteen thousand contingency, which I don't know if in the final throes of it, we need the contingency. So maybe there's like a hundred thousand dollars of unspent money. There's a request on the table for the elevator. Are there, there's still projects that need closeout? I mean?
Well, there's the, the elevator has been approved. Those are funds that have been allocated.
And how much of the one forty have we, has been allocated?
Well, it's all been allocated. None of it's been spent because we're still waiting to see what the results of the project are.
So that's in already in the one point?
Yeah, that's, that's approved funding that's already in there. The question is, if it comes back as a half million dollar project, that money may be returned because it needs to be funded through another mechanism.
Right. So it seems to me there's still like administrative work that you guys are better at doing than we are.
Yeah.
Closing out projects, monitoring that. I think to me personally, I think it's premature to disband. I think you got work.
No, he's saying they would continue to do that.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not saying we disband. I I just think at this stage, right now, we have an open rolling request process. So anyone can submit an ARPA request, we review it. We we decide, do we recommend it to the select board? And I think we as a committee feel like we've done the projects we wanted to do as an ARPA committee. The requests coming in now, like the Center Park ones, the Sigma Tactical Wellness Program from the police. There was a citizen request for online mental health support. These are all what I would consider at some level discretionary and I my always fall back on given the remaining funds available and the other demands through the budget, it really comes down to, is this a priority to the select board, whether we would recommend something? And therefore, I feel like it just becomes.
Well, you don't know what else comes down. I mean, if I understand that correctly, then so there's a hundred thousand of roughly of unspent money. Again, not understanding yet what the elevator is going to come through. And and there's thirty thousand dollars of requests on the table, which you say is maybe beyond your pay grade. It's up to the select board, but that would still leave seventy thousand, potentially some other project could come forward where it would be definitely in your real house to evaluate, right?
Well, David, if I can just.
You know, I don't, as I sit here today, I don't think there'd be anything. Again, back in, back in the, in the summer, we we looked at the coming year and the projects we wanted to support and continue to support. Um, I think the original charge of recovery from the pandemic, we're 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 kind of past that point. So again, as a committee, we discussed it and we feel like these remaining funds should be, should be allocated based on, you know, and I know there's things that have been discussed here tonight and public safety buildings and other things that are important to the town that um, aren't necessarily ARPA requests, but that, you know, we feel like the select board should decide how to how to apply these remaining funds.
That's fine, but you're, you are sort of the compliance arm too, right? Like you guys have vetted like that such and such an expense would meet the criteria set out.
Yeah, I mean, we would, we would certainly, we would be available to confirm that a project now, any town expense is is eligible. So there's not much aside from procurement that wouldn't be eligible, but we would continue to exist as a committee and we would continue to meet regularly. If you had questions to us, we would answer those questions. If you want our opinion on something, we would give it. We just don't feel like we need to keep this open request process because.
Right, so all we're doing, okay, I understand. Okay, so all we're doing is closing out, like, requests are open. Right? The window's closed for new requests, basically.
And and any request would come through you, the select board.
Okay, all right, fine. I got it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
And we didn't want to make that decision. We felt like it's it's appropriate for the select board to make that decision. It's our recommendation that in on the page two, it's that we no longer accept ARPA funding applications as of Friday, February sixteen.
Okay, as a committee.
As a committee.
Ready. We would, uh, you know, if the select board gets, um, ARPA requests and you know, they they want our opinion on it, I suppose we would give it to you, but it's really at at this point um, feels backwards. And because, because there are so many needs and this, this money can be spent on any government expense. We felt that it should be the, the select board that makes that.
I I guess I see two different things. I, I I like the idea of closing out new requests, saying no more new requests can be received after Feb fifteenth, sixteenth, then fine. And then you've got three open requests and then you've got extra money as we get closer that you can advise us as to how to deploy it with the goal of spending every nickel by December thirty-one or whatever the rules are. That's all we have to do, right? I mean,
Yeah.
I, the the notion of disbanding the committee or, I mean, all you have to do is close out new requests. That seems to me the only thing that we need to act on.
Basically what we're doing, but the three open requests that we have, um, the select board has to make the decision.
I, you know, it's fine if you come back and say, we don't know which ones, they all qualify, you guys decide, but.
No, David, I feel more. David, I'm clarifying, David, I think it's not that they're going to come back to us and say, we don't want to decide on these three. What I'm hearing is that as of, if we agree with the recommendation as of Friday, it'll be up to the select board to decide. it'll be up to the select board to decide whether or not those three requests gets funded or not.
Yeah, I mean, I think, listen, the, the, to me, there's sort of three things that the ARPA committee's done a really great job and I commend Kate and Ryan and, I mean, Scott and I forget, I'm sorry, who the third person. John, thank you. But they've done three things really well, right? They've, as Scott said, they've identified things that they wanted to do that, you know, were important to do and they did them. They were good on compliance, making sure that whatever they did approve or recommend was, you know, in compliance with the law. And then finally, and this is the last part, that's pretty important, is they're keeping us, you know, they're keeping the accounting really clearly stated. So we always know like exactly where we stand. So on those last two, I mean, I don't want to give any of that up. I'd like to, you know, I'd like them to continue to drive closeouts and say, here's how much money is left and here are the things you could spend it on. And then, yeah, of course we can make that decision.
And we absolutely planned to do that. That was, that was part of the deal.
Okay, we're not, we're not looking to disband. I, it's just sitting in your discussions, I know there's a lot of needs and there's a lot of opportunities to utilize these remaining funds, but you're in the best position to, to make those final decisions and prioritizations.
I, I got, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
So what do we need? Do we need a motion?
Or it seems to me, okay.
I don't know if it would need a formal motion or do we just?
Yeah. It, just a sense of the board that it's okay for us to close, um, um, applications and that we'll be moving on and it's a little, or we can even change the application and have it sent directly to the select board. Now, you just want to close off applications.
No, I don't think, yeah, I would say.
That wouldn't be helpful to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Close applications.
Yeah.
And the ones that are currently in hand, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll work with you to, to get a decision on it. I don't think we're going to take a position on, on these specific ones, but we'll certainly, the next meeting, we'll, we'll, we'll present them to you in a concise format and, and, and you can decide if against the other priorities with FinCom and, and whomever else, if, if, how you want to allocate those funds. And I think it's important to make those decisions.
When are you going to have fidelity on the elevator? Price.
So that's a me question. So the, um, we have commissioned for a study of three of our elevators in town. We should know by early March, we're just trying to line it all up. So it's cheaper in one day. And then, um, once we get the return on that study, then we should know how much it's going to cost and we can, we can know for sure what we need out of this ARPA request.
And only, only grant gets paid from ARPA and other things get paid from somewhere else?
School is, um, from there, town hall is on the capital plan and so is the library elevator, which might be rolled into the renovation to make it cheaper. So a lot going on, but we're trying to.
But as it relates to the ARPA pool, that will inform you, that'll give us a better number for the amount of money we have left.
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And also just to, just to add to that, you can use ARPA funding for partial funding. So say the grant elevator is actually 250,000, you could put 110 or the delta into the, into the capital plan and still use the ARPA funds.
Yeah, I mean, right. To me, I mean, we, it sounds like something we might just want to flush the, our goal is to not leave a dollar on the table, right?
That's correct.
I mean, it's actually, it's actually perfect timing, right? I mean, it's, it's kind of, and it, it, it allows us to take this $88,000 or whatever else may be left over. And as we're doing the budget, it's kind of 88,000 of free cash for us to apply places without actually touching our free cash.
Yeah. Yeah, you, but you, you cannot put it into free cash, just so you understand that.
Yeah, no, we will spend it.
Yeah, it's.
And we were spending free cash, we can spend it.
It's usable cash. So for instance, um, if you wanted to use it for the Black Earth thing, you could do that, you know? Um,
Yeah.
And it's on a different timeline. It doesn't, again, you, you have spending authority of this money. It doesn't require town meeting. It can happen before, after.
That's great.
And as we're getting the budget requests and we can say, oh no, let's just, that's, that's a one time thing. Let's just use ARPA.
Yeah.
Sounds like.
Or in some cases, if, if, I know we've used it to, to, to push forward a study that may produce the information you need for town meeting. So in some cases you may have a need that's, there's an advantage to doing that project sooner, obviously than, than town meetings allow.
Yeah. With the proviso that you have to do this by December of 2020. It's not forever. Okay.
So again, what I'm hearing is that it's, the board is in agreement that we can close out the open request process. On Friday. Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, Ryan, you're on.
Well, okay, um, so draft one of the budget came out December. The finance committee has had their marathon meetings and then a lot of numbers have clarified in the meantime. So just want to give a quick update to shape this discussion uh, with FinCom tonight. So the original draft one total budget was 35,396,039 and draft two is about $92,000 less than that. Uh, so that came from the schools. We also put the actual COLA throughout the budget, which reduced, uh, a significant chunk of money. And the total request is, is now lower at 3.52% more than, more than last year. So, uh, what the select board and finance committee has said is important about that is it reduced the average tax bill impacts of the increase from last year to this year at an estimated from 4.07 to 3.65. So in order to get to the, uh, guideline that's been discussed, the 3% average tax bill increase, then you would need to reduce the budget by 200,000 plus or minus 20,000. Um, and we talked about why the plus or minus because of the way valuations affect the average tax bill. So that would mean about 0.5% of the total operating budget for a reduction. And I'll show you some reduction models that, that demonstrate that not all of the budget is reducible in that way. A lot of it is, is fixed cost. So the major revenue changes that I'll show you in the chart, the state aid, state aid came in. It's actually a $12,000 reduction, uh, less than 2% increase for us. So while unrestricted government aid went up 3%, everything else went down. So, uh, that hurt Carlyle. And our very conservative state aid numbers missed the mark. Those aren't going to go up because the state is in, I wouldn't say a financial crisis, but they are looking for money, not finding money. So I don't think we'll see anymore. We also discussed the use of ambulance receipts. So ambulance receipts come in as revenue in, um, in a revolving fund. This is funds paid for the use of our ambulance and staff. We are recommending a $50,000 use of these receipts to offset EMT costs. The reason being is the only other major purchase you would use this for is a ambulance. And we believe if you took half of what we've been bringing annually, 50,000 and put it away for 10 years, you'd be able to fund a new ambulance. So we have enough to take that out of the capital plan, which I can show you. So the net change is a $30,000 increase in revenue. Expense changes, you know about this already, but the regional school in December voted a 20, what equated to a $26,000 reduction in our budget. CPS transferred 10,000 for the facility director from their budget to ours. So that's a net zero change. The board of health decreased their budget request by 3,000. Um, this was missed in draft one, but the cultural council did ask for $5,000 in the select board budget to support their efforts. This is an increase that likely need to be debated. I did model a 2.25% COLA. A couple of people asked me to, to model that. So that's in the budget. And then the vocational assessment came in and actual numbers and it's a 3.2, the 3.2K increase. So vocational school is something that we are required to pay for the next two years and then we'll drop out of the budget for around a $120,000 decrease. So that, that can be modeled into the long-term plan, but it, it doesn't help for the FY25 budget. So some deficit scenarios in terms of how to solve that $200,000 deficit. The, on the revenue side, as I said, state aid is likely not going to increase like it does every year. I would not rely on that at all. And normally we say that and it goes up anyway. I, I don't think it is going to this year. TSAC, they didn't get to it tonight, but they're discussing increasing their transfer station sticker fee. This hasn't been voted yet, but would result in a 10 to $20,000 increase in revenue. You could relax revenue assumptions. Uh, our revenue assumptions are pretty conservative, but you'll see, uh, I did increase those in draft one by three and a half percent. So we did already relax them a little bit. Further relaxing would just, um, put you at risk of not hitting revenue numbers, but also impact your free cash. And then you could use additional free cash, as you know, to offset the tax rate. On the expense side, you'll see that some costs are fixed. And then other costs are controlled by other entities like the schools. Um, and then I have some cut scenarios that I'd like to show you. So I can just recall this up. Okay. So I sent this to the board and this will be available in the packet. This is just draft two. You're familiar with this document. This shows you here how all the numbers I just discussed matriculate down to a 3.6% average tax bill increase. And I can show you in the levy amount, if you take out 200,000, that results in a 3% tax increase. So that's that deficit number. So you can see it in real time. Alright, so it's a bit of an eye chart, but it's, it is something that we can explain. So the, this is in the FY24 budget request by major department title. This is 25 what they're requesting this year. This is the net increase of each of those lines. And then here I've modeled a 5% cut to every budget that you can cut, a 1% and a one and a half. And I also modeled for fun because I'm a nerd. Uh, what, what would do if you uh, held every increase to 3% or lower? But these numbers are, you can have 3%, everything else has to return. What would that look like? So coming down, I don't expect you to memorize this. I'm just showing you a, um, half a percent cut if everybody cut to include the schools would be a $160,000 reduction, which would pair nicely with uh, some of the revenue adjustments that we just discussed. A 1% would be a $320,000 cut. And so if you were to stay at guideline, it's somewhere between half a percent and 1%. Now, some of these cuts are not, um, not as as easy or likely as others. The, uh, regional school would have to cut somewhere between 40 and 80,000. So that's a 200 and that's, I'm sorry, that's 160 to $250,000 cut in their total budget. And then, uh, police would have to take a, a pretty big reduction. I, I do think that they can, they could absorb that with some, with some risk management. And then, um, another big one that should be discussed is insurance. So the insurance advisory committee is discussing different plan changes, essentially increasing the deductibles to allow for a reduction in the, in the very significant increase in our health insurance. That helps the employee and it also helps the town because it's looking at a 9% increase on health insurance. So if we did some structural changes, then you could see some, some, uh, gains there in terms of the deficit. So I, I can come back to this. I know I'm talking fast. But I do want to show you one more thing before I turn it over to you for questions and discussion. So this is a question that comes up a lot. So understanding next year is important. We got to get that done, but also looking at the long-term capital plan model. So that includes the two big things that are discussed and have been asked of a model, one being the police station renovation, which will be on the warrant this year. And then a fire station, which we're considerably estimating at 12 million, which I know has a target of 10 million. If you were to borrow at 30 years and 5% for those projects, then this is what that would look like. And one big assumption here is that all of the capital items, like the fire trucks and other building repairs could be kept inside the 3% annual operating budget increase, which if you look at the capital planning model is possible with some diligence. Things that are not considered in this are any major renovations to the DPW building. And then of course, the, um, discussions about community center space. So those are big decisions that are not in here. So I'll try to make this bigger, but uh, I have a chart which shows this better. And thanks to Kelly and David for helping me a little bit with this presentation, what, what would be, uh, helpful in terms of decision-making. So the operating shows a 3% increase year over year, starting here in FY25 uh, through a 10-year model. If you look at police, this is, uh, costs above that 3% threshold. So $135 on the average tax bill, what you're looking at, I'm sorry, here at, is the average tax bill. And then starting in FY27, the cost for a $12 million fire station borrow. So annual operating cost, the cost of, to the average tax bill of adding the police station and then the cost of adding the fire station in '27. So you'll see here a, uh, increase in the average tax bill, a really big spike. So from the 3% that you've been modeling to a 6% in FY27 and then assuming no other major borrows or, or additional projects, a leveling off of 3% increase per year. So that looks like this. And this is, uh, just spread out to FY2030. So you can see it a little bit better. But the operating budget here is the gray line. So this is a 3% increase on the average tax bill. Here you'll see in FY26, the spike to the police station, that's $135 on the average tax bill. And then the fire station in FY27, you see this spike here of, uh, almost a little over $500,000 in the average tax bill for a total tax impact of all three, operating increases, police and fire uh, here in this range. So 6% spike projected in FY27 and then a leveling off of 3% on top of that until you pay off those notes. Also important to note is that as you borrow, those costs of borrowing go down. So you'll see a slight trend down in that debt, which would obviously decrease taxes in a very small manner over 30 years. So this is a generational borrow. So 30 years from now, they'll see more relief than, than obviously you'll see in the next five to 10 years.
I want one quick question.
Yeah.
Do we have a stabilization fund, a capital stabilization fund? And could it be used to level off that 5.98%? Because everything else is, you know, possibly acceptable because it's under 3%. Um,
So let's say, so assuming, let's use easy numbers. There, it's obviously a little bit plus or minus, but you have 5 million in reserves approximately that you can use in order to stay over your 10%. You could take out 3 million of that and smooth that curve, but that would be $135 in the average tax bill. So either way, you're going to see a bump for the fire station, at least a, a 2% bump that year and then maintained over the next uh, 25 years. So you, you could smooth it off, but you will not erase it. So during the capital planning.
Yeah, I'm just trying to take the 5.98 down to, you know, a 3, 3%.
In that one year.
And you can't do it.
You will not, no.
Okay, just.
You would have to use all your reserves, which would put you in a very bad borrowing spot.
You can't make a $12 million bond go down significantly with our little, I mean, we have stable, that's for like, you know, when you have an assessment ratio shift, like with the region.
Yeah.
That's okay, you know, but $12 million borrow, you're not going to make that go away. I think if you could go back, Ryan, to your, the graph that you plotted. I mean, I think we need some historical context on that. You know, I don't remember, but it was on the order of 15 years ago that we confronted, uh, building a new grade school building that we did. And at the same time, slightly later than that, building in new, our share of the new high school. And that was a, you know, generational uh, capital convergence of built, school buildings, you know, we, we inherited poor decisions from the 1960s that required us to be looking at those new buildings earlier than they really, we should have, but we did it, right? So we did it, we observed the debt, it's going down now. It's, you know, kind of going away. And this is actually a much lower ask. It happens to converge that we have the two public safety buildings, both needing things at the same time. But I mean, you have those things. And I think what this graph shows is, you know, if you really were to, if the next time you present, uh, maybe Ryan, if you actually show it out like 20 years, that slope doesn't look so daunting, right? Because it's only 3%. I mean, I say only, but it's a 3% slope. And then the red and the blue lines gradually converge on the purple line because that debt service goes down. So it's that one year that's painful, but it's only, I say only, but it's painful to the degree of about $500 per household. And then it's, then it doesn't increase if we're, so I think from my view, we have to kind of get our arm, you know, we have to get at peace with the size of the fire station project, wherever it lands. But then we just. But then we just have to be disciplined and this is really the second part, very important part. We have to be disciplined about. Keeping ta, you know, keeping a lid on the operating budget and as Ryan has shown in the past and can show again. Generating free cash that we can apply towards capital projects to not layer on more debt, you know, to basically pay for that. Capital through, you know, operating savings and things. That that to me is the important thing. So if you can keep it at that line. You know, again, it's a little misleading because it looks like this huge spike in this graph, but if you really give it historical context. It's not as large as it looks.
I think that that the one thing about the historical context though. Is that, yes, you know, we did the regional school, we did. The great, you know, CPS school, um, the addition there. The taxes went up to do that, right? And because. We had to pay, we had to pay it back. But they're not going back down again, right? And so. Um, you know, that's now the baseline and now, and now we're going to be, you know, doing it again. Um, and so I just want to, you know, say, you know, it's, we, you know, we're, we're always saying, oh, well, this is only for so such. Such and such period of time. It never goes back down again. Right? The next borrowing we do is added back, is added on to that new baseline.
Yeah, it's cumulative and I think we have to be aware of that.
Right, we're not, we're not taking. Yeah.
The increase is just not going to be as egregious as the bottom line.
Right, be- because now we're paying so much more.
Right, exactly.
So the the decision points. And I've just been asked to try and shape the conversation. So the decision points are. Um, for the short term in F Y twenty five. Is to keep the operating budget at three percent. If you want to control this line, that's the only way to do that. So it's a two hundred thousand dollar deficit this year and then. Continued discussions in F Y twenty six and twenty seven. And then. Also included in that is the capital plan, making sure that you're. Getting everything on a plan and understanding how that fits into your debt model and your operating budget so that you are not. You are not um, exceeding this three percent line. And the the important thing is that Nathan just said on the school side, you do have a big debt borrow that's going to go down over the next ten years. But the uh, assessment continues to go up, which is eating into some of that. That difference and then they're starting to ramp up their capital planning for fixing the school, which. Is going to have to happen in the next ten to twenty years, so.
And Ryan, did you say that um? Oh, never mind. I'm just reading your chart or I was gonna ask you if the five, the other big ask is the fire truck.
Yes, so um. Let me just show what that is. I think that's important to understand. So the. This budget line right here, which is your long term debt and principal. Line. So we held, we held that flat. It actually went down by fifty five thousand. So you could realize fifty five thousand in savings in this line. But what we're doing is reserving that line in next year's decrease in order to pay for that fire truck. Eventually that school H VAC and then the D P W. So that's how. I'm recommending that you keep everything else besides the buildings inside the operating budget at three percent, just by keeping this capacity.
Yep.
So mechanically, that would be fifty five thousand either going to roads or. The fire truck itself was a down payment and then borrowing the rest and then having that capacity come back up as you're borrowing.
So can Ryan, can you go to the capital plan uh, tab on that sheet? Just to clarify for people. And maybe make it a little smaller. Yeah. So you've got. Different colors going on and you have a two point seven million dollar spend for the current year. How do you, I mean, you kind of show how to pay for it, but I guess maybe you could. Elaborate a little on that where you're right, right where you're at. So how how you pay for that two point seven million?
Okay, so two point seven. So we'll have to get used to this number being bigger than what you're used to because it includes everything, C P A. Anything that's capital. It's all going to be rolled into one plan so you can see it. So to pay for two point seven in this budget cycle, you'd be using eight hundred and thirty thousand in free cash. Every bit of your chapter ninety that comes in, which should be around three fifty this year. The M F C has two hundred thousand dollars in articles that can offset some of these costs because they're their projects. Uh, straight four hundred for four hundred on the splash pad. So that's C P A funds. And then to cover the cost of this. Nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar fire truck. And it's much more complicated than just saying, we're going to use debt, but. Nine hundred and fifty thousand in debt, which is what we're using that capacity for that I just showed you. Then a hundred thousand dollars in others is. ARPA money that could be used here. And grant funding, which we expect. Also, uh, fifty thousand extra from. The governor's proposed chapter ninety uh, road money.
But if we're, if we're focused on. As we are slightly right now, the impact to the average taxpayer. What you're saying is. None of those things would affect his, his or her tax bill.
All of these could be accomplished in a three percent.
Right, that's the important point. And that's the kind of discipline that, so you see on the free cash line. Using eight hundred thirty now and then there's a five hundred thousand dollar placeholder for the out years. That is the intersection to me of the. Discipline on the operating budget line. To make room for capital, right? I mean, uh, I don't want to spend the time now to go through all the. Things, but as Ryan said, you can see two million, two point seven, two point one, three, blah, blah, blah. So you see around two million dollars a year of. Capital that we need to kind of. Keep, you know, the town together, basically. And. I think what he's saying is. Operational fu, operational budgeting discipline will throw off half a million dollars of cash. And then there's other things, chapter ninety and C P A and so forth. You know, that will make that affordable apart from the two buildings, right? So you can isolate, I mean. I agree with Nathan, you know, the thing is a diode, right? The budget always goes up. But it could have gone up a lot worse, right? I mean, our operating budget line has not. I I think it's, we've been pretty careful to try to keep it in that. Two, three percent, you know, range all the time. I have one question, Ryan, on the one point four million that's in, I think it's twenty seven. What is that? Tell me about that debt right there. Yeah, right below, below where you are.
Okay, so that is the um, town hall roof. And the. The H VAC project at the school.
So that would be a, that would be an excluded debt article, but you're saying we can pay for it inside though.
I'm sorry, that also includes the dispatch radio replacement. So. We could borrow that inside the operating budget.
Okay, alright.
So I have, I have another question. Um, and it's. The C P A four hundred thousand. That, that four hundred thousand dollar splash pad I've never seen on our um. Capital needs. List before today, basically. And what worries me is that things get in the back door and goes to C P A. And we never have a chance to look at it and say, well, where does this fit in our other capital needs? And do we need a four hundred, you know? Uh, what do we need more? Four hundred thousand dollar splash pad or, I don't know. Two H VAC coils, uh, or or whatever uh, other thing. Um, how do we? Uh, establish some sort of policy or procedure so that things don't slip. Through before without any discussion by either the FinCom or the Select Board and then just kind of pops up in C P C. Or, uh, you know, or an ARPA for that matter, you know, or anywhere. Any other funding.
You know, I can, I can say a couple of things about this as the um. Select Board Representative, the C P C. We, I feel very strongly that the C P C as a committee. Needs to uh, do some work, you know, in the this next. Part of the year to um, understand the the long term capital plan. For the town as a whole and so that we can be looking at requests for C P A funds. Within the context of the town's long term needs. Um, and obviously some of those needs will not, are not eligible for C P A funds, but those that. Uh, might be, right? We need, we need to have an understanding about what those are. And uh, I I will say just on this particular request for the splash pad, uh. I'm surprised to see it in there too, because we have only um, just. It it, we just heard a presentation on it um, two weeks ago as a C P C and we are, we are definitely. Still um, considering it and and can, thinking about whether or not this is something that's appropriate for C P A funds at this time.
It's, it seems to me that in the past, for instance, COSCOM has gone to FinCom and you've got FinCom, you can, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. But let's say they they have a project and they go to you and you say, well. Um, we think this is something you should take to C P C. I mean, a lot of it has gone from, you know, so at least it's had some. Presentation somewhere else and they then are redirected some, you know, but FinCom has put it in. You know, this, the scope of their budget and said, well, we don't think we want it out of an operating budget. We think. This should be paid in C P C or something like that. I see Lynn unmuted, so. Oh, no.
Well, I mean, same thing can be said to the pickleball court, right?
Yeah, so I I just feel like, you know, maybe we need some to codify some of this. In a policy so that these things don't kind of. Pop up. Otherwise, you know, you start to get picked to death by ducks and it is, you know. Anybody who has anything that they don't. They don't want to go. You know, have. Looked at, goes to C P C, you know?
On the other hand, Kate, you got to remember the, the C P A statute. Does, is pretty clear and and unless, I'm not sure if we even as a town. Could. Require somebody that was um, a group that was interested in bringing a project uh, forward to. For C P A funds to the C P C, whether we could require that it had to go. First through some other town body um, for a recommendation. We'd have to look into that.
I I know it sounds simple and maybe I'm broken record here, but. Enforcing the plan, making sure that everything is on the plan. That each group doesn't have their own plan that shows up during budget season. You should be talking about, right? Really, this town should be talking right now about what's coming in F Y twenty eight and twenty nine, not what's coming in F Y twenty five. But that takes time and discipline. So. If, if you truly commit to this long term funding model and capital plan, then then I do think you can accomplish all these goals, but but it is hard. In a decentralized structure to tell each department that they have to come up with their five year plan, not. Just bring something and in a symptom of that is in previous documents I've read. Capital plan was considered things that are short term capital like vehicles and larger items were called Warren articles. Uh, it's the same thing. It's really just how you want to fund it. So coming up with a common vernacular, common plan. Uh, would make these, make the discussions about this just showed up go away because you would be seeing things for multiple years before they came to you and you've already discussed how to fit it in.
Right, so I think I agree with that. I I think. To Barney's point, I think the important thing is we can impose schedule discipline. We may or may not be able to, you know, tell them they can or can't spend some B A funds, but. Uh, it's, I think we are at a point where splash pad or anything else. Should not be considered for the F Y twenty five operating budget at this point.
I agree.
It needs to go to twenty six. You know, we shouldn't repeat the kind of process we had with the auditorium lighting. Last year where it's, and we still haven't done it, right? Where stuff came out of the woodwork at the last minute. So we should. Leverage these, this great planning tool that Ryan's given us to. Um, you know, to say, okay, the timeline on capital, I mean, I'm going to make it up here, but the timeline on capital projects is. By December thirty one or some date, we need to have your. Next year capital request in and we have a vetting process, whatever that vetting process is. You know, something like that. But I I want to make sure we, because we're running out of time, that we circle back to the operating side. So. You know.
But before we do that, before we do that, I just want to, Ryan, if you could just go up. So that the chapter nine, so we had the presentation about the roads. Where, where does this three hundred thousand, where did that number three hundred thousand come from or where does that put us? You know, within that, I I don't remember what the numbers were that we needed in order to. Kind of maintain the normal or maybe catch up a little bit. Where does this three hundred thousand put us? In relationship to that presentation that we had.
So to maintain your roads at the current level. Um, and not fix some of the alternative roads that you discussed, it's five hundred thousand a year. So this is short. About sixty percent of where you need to be.
And what, what were you thinking on that in terms of the way it, um, you, you uh, lay it out over the next four years?
My thinking was the Select Board needs to have a, a pretty strong discussion about it because. Uh, you need to prioritize it against buildings and other capital. Because there are some towns that sacrifice their roads in order to fund their buildings and vice versa. So it's really a policy decision. Which is why most of England roads are no good.
So, alright. I think, so there's a couple of questions. I think the first one is, though, on the operating budget. Uh, are we insisting on three percent? Or is the three point six eight or whatever we're at eight six, uh, which, uh, is that okay?
I mean, can I just pipe it in here?
Yeah.
Uh, so we, we talked at a high level about this, um, on our. Meeting, a couple of meetings ago and. We were, we were all pretty unanimous that anything to hold at three percent, if at all possible, and not go beyond that. And a couple of reasons for that is, one, we've already talked about that and that is, we are looking at. Some substantial increases. Hopefully it is going to be for just one year, but nonetheless. It is going to be a fairly large increase coming up. I think that there's some opportunities here for this year to be a little more aggressive. We have our, we have a joint meeting on Thursday with uh, the co, the uh, FinCom in Concord. And my takeaway, and again, I'm not reading tea leaves here, so don't quote me, but. My takeaway is that they are going to be very. Fiscally responsible to hold the schools to their guidelines. And if that's the case. We should see some savings in that respect. We've already, they've already come down some. So there's a potential possibility there. Where we could see a little more savings, probably around. Twenty five to twenty six thousand dollars. So a couple of ways we should think about this and some of the recommend, there was not a one recommendation out of FinCom, but some of the ideas. Were to, one, a couple of people said to think about going back and asking the departments, could they take, could they shave off or reduce? Some savings at around half a percent. Others thought we should pick various departments, particularly the ones that have. Um, flexible revolving accounts that. You know, if they can't do any kind of reduction, perhaps they fund whatever their increases that they're looking for to fund out of that. Um, and then some, some of the FinCom folk were thinking, look at it proportionally. Based on each individual um, departmental budget. So those were some of the things that we were discussing in terms of how to look at this. I guess what I'm saying, and I'd like to hear from others on the, on the FinCom. I, I would like to think we can take another bite at this apple and not. And not say, this is the number, let's stick with this. We've got a little time to do it. I would like to hear from everybody else. A couple of things, I know I sound like a broken record, but. Things that are becoming very eminent that we need to look at um. Very, very soon before our backs are against the wall is. Looking at flexibility on the staffing options, much like what Ryan did in the town hall. Thinking about restructuring staff within the departments. It's not a long term solution or panacea. But it definitely will give us some relief there. We definitely have to start opening up these conversations around regionalization. About outsourcing, whether it's dispatch, janitorial services, whatever it is, we need to be talking about that. And as Ryan's already mentioned about. Uh, making some decisions around insurance um, coverage in terms of how we're looking at that um. How we're splitting up retirees versus active. So those are just a couple of things that I wanted to mention, but I would like to get some feedback with the committee. If anybody would like to chime in and give their two cents on this before we move forward. Is everybody awake?
I can make a comment here. So um, so I agree with Lynn, that the meeting that we had last week, I supported the. Um, going back and seeing what we could do to reduce the uh, increase this year. Knowing that the future increases are uh. Knowing that the future increases are uh potentially gonna be bigger. I think the other co- the comment, a clarifying comment that I would make is I think there's two different exercises, you know, I think fixing it for this year. Doesn't doesn't help it for the next year, right? I think there's some more material. Um, structural types of things that we'll have to talk about, because every year you're trying to squeeze it down and, you know, people can squeeze down a little bit every year. But it it's just not sustainable that way. So things that, so I'm separating that exercise from what Lynn is noting. So I doubt you're gonna get to a regionalization uh recommendation and in decision before um all the budgets needs to be approv- approved. So if there's two components to it, right? I think one is for this year, let's try to work um with the region with um. With the departments to reduce the increase as much as we can, but also make sure we set the context for them that this is, this is a bigger. Uh, conversation, that something needs to change, seeing the the trajectory that Ryan has kind of mapped out for us. Um, to try to try to address that as best as we can um in that, whether it's regionalization, where there's some things. That Lynn is highlighting here in terms of sharing of resources and whatnot. So there's kind of call out this is, is two 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 different exercises.
Thanks.
And I'll echo too that um. You know, looking, Ryan has been very good at looking up, looking at a five-year plan and making us aware of what everything looks like in the future. Um, which is something that I think that we've desperately needed. Uh, but especially, you know, we we could. Kind of take it as it's presented to us and just say this year is fine um and we'll try to work on some of the points that Lynn made and Victor was just speaking of. Uh, but knowing the context of what is coming from an expense standpoint for the town um most likely, yeah, over the next five years. I think it's really our fiscal responsibility to keep the operating budget um as low as we can. Um, three is an arbitrary number, but at least it emotionally um for I think many taxpayers would be something that they can understand, but. Uh, bumping up closer to four is a number that I think we should just take it as much of a swing at trying to keep it down as possible.
Anybody else? Mark? Erin? Heidi?
Greg.
Uh, I don't have anything extra to add beyond what's been said. I I agree with everything that folks have cited so far.
Oh, yeah, ditto. I agree with everyone who's been said.
So I would say, well, I think I'm gonna pull the select board. Um. We set a, we set a goal of three percent. Um, we're not at three percent now. Are we intending to stick to that goal and are we going to direct the FinCom to? Get there? Because they can't do their work without us letting them know what the goal is.
I I I would say, yes, I mean, I think. You know, we we pick three percent. This is kind of the first one we've gotten back. It's over three percent and saying, oh, well, let's go higher at this point. You know, I I I think we need to stick to the three percent and see, see what we can do and and not lose it at this point or we're kind of negotiating against ourselves.
Thank you, Nathan. David?
Uh, yeah, I totally agree. And I, my question, what I was going to ask earlier, Ryan is, so you presented. Some scenarios. I wanna just make sure we have the math right. I and I totally support the three percent. So you you pointed out in your earlier part, I don't know, I totaled up like a hundred and forty K. Which is a combination of some revenue increases. And some expense decreases already realized and then maybe the sticker fee, which I realize we haven't taken up yet. Uh, and then you presented a bunch of models of department by department reductions, depending on whether you say impose a. Half a percent or one percent cut, or you simply say there's a cap of three percent. And those, at least the three percent model totaled. A hundred and seventy seven K, which is more than you would need to close the gap. So I'm just. I guess I got two things. I wanna make sure we have sort of consensus between the two boards tonight. One is, how much do we really need to ask departments to cut? And the second thing is, when we're asking a cut, do we ask them to haircut whatever they came up with by a fixed amount? Or do we say the cap is three and if you're over three, you gotta be under three? That's, those are my questions. I gotta go on mute, cause my dogs are.
Well, I think, Ryan, if you can go back to the breakdown by department. I don't know if you can easily do that.
It's right here.
Actually, um, you didn't, there was no um, on the whole three, you didn't give us a a sum at the bottom. Could you tell us what the sum of the cuts were there?
It's right here.
Well, that says parallel public schools. That's not the sum of whatever was up above.
That whole column W.
Yeah.
I I totaled it. Column W is a hundred seventy seven thousand. To Ryan's point. He didn't total it, but to Ryan's point, though, it includes, but it does not include a cut of. CCRSD. I mean, we, you know, CCRSD, I think, as Lynn said, they'll cut something, but we can't dictate what. Right? They're gonna tell us to take a hike. So I think we should decide internally. How much we want our departments to cut and again, like, from my view. We should impose a cap and say, if you're over the cap, you gotta cut, you gotta get under the cap, as opposed to saying. Somebody who came up with a modest budget increase, just arbitrarily, you gotta cut another half a percent out of your budget, but that's just my opinion. So I really. Wanna make sure that, um, you know, we have some agreement, some guidance for FinCom.
Yeah, so just to to add my voice on this, I, A, I completely support us holding uh to a three percent. Um, increase um and we should make every effort to get to that. Um. And secondly, I agree with David. I do not, I don't support a someone across the board, everybody has to do this a certain percent. I think we should um, we should ask people to, if they're not, if they're over three percent, then they have to make. Um, the the adjustment to bring themselves to three percent.
Oh, okay. In other words, you're saying you wouldn't make everybody cross one uh, uh, let's say, do a one percent. Cut across the board. You just, you would prefer to ask people to get to, if they're above three percent, to get to three percent. Okay.
Yes, yeah.
I I, I think it's a more equitable, honestly. Way, because if the, if somebody's already kept a three percent and now you ask them to cut a percent or even a half a percent, I feel it's not as fair as the. In certain respects.
Yeah, I don't, you know, uh, Ryan, you don't have a a a column that would show that, right? That um if you just pulled out the people that were over thirty percent, over three percent. Showing us what that would mean they would have to cut to get to three percent. That's not in here, is it?
It is. It's right here.
Which one is it? T is in Tom?
Oh, W.
It's column W.
It's column W.
That's what hold three percent means. Okay, gotcha.
And so that totals, that totals one seventy seven. But.
I, one seventy two, I see.
Or something like that, but but but.
Your point, David, it's more than we need.
I think so, but I mean, it's a good target. Why not just give it as a target?
I would, I would, I would take it as a target and if somebody, and then you have, the difference. Between that and what you really need uh would be your, what I would call a contingency fund. So if one department just simply couldn't do it or two. You know, you can take that out of that difference, you know, you can do some negotiations.
And and the other possibility is we get below three percent overall, which would be fantastic. Right?
Right.
That that wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How how would that, you know, say, okay, it's three percent? Um, how does that reconcile against what we may have said are priorities or? Things where we have said, yes, we, you know, that department should do that, you know, like we were just having a conversation about GIS, right? Um, so somehow, somehow we also need to factor in whether or not it's a priority for us that that, that that department. Um, you know, is spending more money. Or another way of saying is, if are the service, same service is going to be offered?
Right, what would the service impact be?
Well, I, you know what, um, I don't think we should dictate the the um. Cuts, this is, this would be presented to the departments as a, an exercise. And they would come back to us with the cuts they think they would have to make in order to get there. And if we feel that those cuts aren't acceptable, we, you know, we don't make them. But if they are acceptable. And if they can really do it and find it, or if they have some revolving funds or whatever else, let them do it.
Right, and I'm glad you mentioned that last part, Kate, cause part of the equation. And we sat, some of us, I was in a FinCom meeting, I don't know, it was a week or two ago.
Yeah.
We spent like a good hour on that debate, right? There are pots of. We don't wanna be, I agree with Kate, we don't wanna be uh too prescriptive to the departments. But we need to make them aware and we have been making them aware that there are pockets of unused money sitting around that are non-productive to them right now. That they, if they feel like they can't actually make the budget cut, they may tap alternate revenue sources. That's kind of at their discretion.
Yeah, I mean, the money in some instances is just continuing like a bank account to grow and grow and grow. The expenses. Are not even close to what those revenues look like, yet they are still asking for operational.
Sure, of course. What would you do? Right, yeah. So I think that's, that's a good approach and I agree, we should just try it. And then, you know. We will, we will get the feedback. Um, I've not, I have no doubt that the departments will feed back what they can and cannot do.
And I I would just uh uh second, uh, I think maybe it's Travis that said this, anyway, that that their. Their response should include um the the impact on their service to the town.
I said that, but I also wanna go on record that I'm a supportive of the three percent. I think that that's the right target, so.
But we wanna, you know, we wanna have, be informed, right? We wanna make an informed decision on whether or not to. Hold the department to that, depending on what the impact could be on town services, so.
I I do wanna also say, though, you know, as we're talking about, you know. Completely think it'd be great if it was under three percent, right? But if we could fix it under three percent. But i- if we're looking at how we're getting there, you know, I do support, you know. Increasing the fee for the transfer station some because it's ridiculously low right now, but. Those are taxes. And so I don't, you know, I think, I think in getting to the three percent, it's not like, let's. Let's increase our revenues in some other way. Um, unless we're getting the money from the state. Um, you know, I think, you know, looking, looking to our citizens to get more money in order to get that three percent, I think is cheating a little bit.
Ryan, back on column W, that doesn't include any potential additional reductions for um. The high school, correct? That one seventy two, I think it was.
It does not.
Okay, good. That's what I was hoping. Just making sure.
Yeah.
You'd be pretty darn close to where we need to be. If uh, I'll have a better idea on Thursday after we meet on where they're coming down on that.
So, have we agreed that the exercise that's going to be going on is that we are asking? Some, if not most, uh, not all of the committees and or departments that are are over three to. To cut down to three. Just tell us what the impact of that is and what the, what's gonna, how they, how they're managing. That's, that's the next step. And then we.
Are you asking me, Kate?
I'm asking all of us.
Okay.
If we have agreement on this, if we understand that this is our next step.
Yep, I mean, I'm aligned.
Okay, that's good. And then we'll see where we are. And if we're way low. Maybe, you know, we can use that in our forward planning with that, that'll generate free cash and we're gonna need it. When we have that, you know, five point eight percent increase in the taxes. So um. I think whatever we can do now is worth doing.
Yep, I agree.
Okay.
Excellent. Um, so Ryan, I, we can work together if you want. Um. Just let me know when you guys are ready for us to adjourn. I just wanna see if I can get something on the calendar real quick while I've got everybody on the phone. So I won't interrupt.
Okay. Do we have anything else on the budget? Where are we?
We have plenty to do. It's whether or not you want to.
Oh, I think my, my only other thing is, and I don't know, you know, this is probably too much in the weeds, but I don't think the splash pad should be in this year's. Capital plan. It should be at least in next year's, if not the year after that. Um, because we, we haven't had it. We have, we, and then. Our next year or during next year, we really need to get on our horse and get everybody to give us a five-year plan. If possible. And then we fit, cause we, we can't, we've got to be fitting these pieces.
So I think the most.
Sorry. Go ahead.
What's a splash pad?
Oh, what's a splash pad?
Like one sentence, what's a splash pad?
Think about it as like a big sprinklers that kids run around under, you know, these funky sprinklers.
There's a, there's a link in your, there's a link in your packet, uh, that'll.
Okay.
One picture, you'll understand it immediately.
Yeah.
The goal pending our discussions tomorrow on agenda is to bring all of the warrant articles and people. People that are advocating for them to the next two meetings so that you can understand those in detail. That also needs to be done as part of the budget.
Okay. Um, do we, uh, do you want us to go through, because it says, we had an initial warrant article review. Do you want us to? Indicate which ones we want to see earlier rather than later tonight? Would that be helpful? Or?
It would. We have about four meetings left on.
Okay. Can you put those up on the screen? On the screen, please, or I can do it if you can, uh.
Yeah.
Okay, there they are. Broke mine up. You want me to share my, oh, you've got it there, okay.
Can you, is there a way to blow these up?
Whoa, too big.
Yes, up, up, there it resolved. Okay.
So, I'll take some liberties here. Capital equipment. You'll let me know if if any of the um. If any of the requests require additional. But some of the bigger ones are called out here, so fire truck borrow. You wanna talk to the chief, the MFC, so this is just a bundling of capital projects under the MFC's umbrella. So it's no additional money, it's just how it's structured, meaning they want a grouping of capital items under their control. I think you opioted enough. You wanna talk to the school committee about their special education stabilization fund?
I think that's one of the earlier ones, possibly.
What is the, do we have a, what's the dollar impact of that?
Well, um, no, nothing yet. They wanna put a thousand dollars that they have left over from. Something, I forget what, into a stabilization fund for um. Special education students. So it, uh, and then they would fill that fund up over the years with. Instead of giving, returning money to the town for free cash, if they have left over money, they would put it in the stabilization fund. They already have ninety thousand as a contingency fund for sped, which. I don't know whether they're gonna use this year, but they have a line item for next year. I believe they have one, a line item for that this year as well. Um, and the problem. For me is that if they put that money in that stabilization fund, it can only be used for sped.
Yeah.
However, if they got an extra kit and they needed the money and asked for us to give the free cash, we could. Certainly let them have free cash, but if they didn't need it, then that free cash would be still sitting in free cash. And if we need the free cash. For a capital project, we can use it. But if it, if you sequester that money into a stable. But if it, if you sequester that money into a stabilization fund at the schools for sped. The, even the schools can't use it for their, one of their capital projects. So it, it ties up a lot of money for it if something were to happen. Um.
That one needs to come back.
If you were putting money into a stabilization fund, as I was talking about earlier tonight. Um, because you know you have a project that's coming up, and you know that you're going to have this spike. And you're going to be using it to, to level off that spike. That's not a, well, maybe it'll happen and, you know.
Yeah. We want that one to come back, come to us sooner. Okay.
I think we need.
Well, I would, I would, let me just chime in. I think. I spent some time with Sarah after that meeting, just, I want to make a couple of points. One is. She was under the impression, and maybe it's somewhat my fault for not being a good liaison, that, that. Issue had already been resolved last year. I have no recollection of it having been resolved last year, but. Uh, once she understood our arguments, the ones that Kate made, I'm pretty sure she's ready to withdraw that request. I don't think. I think she understands that we don't want that for all the reasons Kate cited. So I think it's going to go away.
Ah, okay, well, then we don't.
Ryan, you'll have to circle back, uh, with her to confirm, but I'm pretty sure. And Brian was on before, I don't know if he's still on, but. You know, they didn't, you know, they ran into pretty unified opposition that we expressed to them at. The school committee meeting, and I think they were a little surprised at how strongly we expressed our opinion, but. I don't think they denied that we're making logical arguments.
Okay.
And one, uh, one argument that you didn't make, Kate, but I want to make sure is made is. We got to be, if we're going to solve this problem that we just confronted of. Expenses always going up, we have to solve it together as a town. We can't have these little balkanized. Lots of money here and there. We got to be one town. We just got to think like one town. So, thank you.
So the amenities, amenities building is certainly something that we need to bring. So that is a big borrow at the school, at the regional high school that has a lot of attention right now in Concord.
And well, and I, I just report, I was at, uh, the Concord, um. Select board meeting last night, there was, I was invited, Lynn and Victor were there. I'm sorry, they're not still on the line.
No, we're here. We have an adjournment.
Sorry, yeah. I strongly suspect this will be either, you know, hugely modified or maybe even withdrawn.
Yeah.
They, they really ran into a buzzsaw of opposition, um. And, and the thing that really surprised me was when I asked, have you, did you look at any alternatives? Like, you know, for instance, you know, prefab, they said, no, and we're not going to, and you know, this is, you know. This was a plan, and then later in the hallway, the chair said, oh, you know, we did look, you know, we are looking at it now, but I didn't want to say it. It's like. Why did you want to say it, you know?
So we don't, we, we're trying to identify, um, articles that can. That, that can come back. We, we can't discuss each one of these articles, I think, tonight.
Okay, well.
Each, each one of them has nuance to it.
So I think I would wait for this one to see where it falls, and because maybe we don't have to.
So then, uh, Julie mentioned this project here, the forty-five thousand dollar planning board G I S, initial investment. Um, Boghouse Repairs, Water Management Plan, these are two cons comm requests. Center Park is looking for a shed. This is your project, police station renovation. And then a slew of CPA articles, so I think that's its own meeting with C, CPA, CPC. So that's, um, Boghouse feasibility study. The eighty-eight door, the fifth street dyke, the, and the recreation splash pad has been discussed tonight. And then a rental assistance placeholder. And potentially funding for Cranberry Bog Dam Number One Evaluation, and then of course. A placeholder for the CPC. So we do plan on bringing, I'm sorry, the, uh, citizen's petition, so. But a few articles, I wanted to bring those back as individual discussion points, so you can ask questions and, and become informed if you're not already.
A lot of those CPC ones will hopefully be talking about at the land use, the land summit.
Yep.
And I'll just say that the CPC is meeting again in three weeks, three weeks from last night. So it'd be better for us, that group to come after that to the select board.
Yeah.
Yeah. So are there, so are there any others, the other, any that we have to see urgently? Doesn't, it, it sounds like a lot of them are. Kind of, you know, need some time to cook before they come to see us, actually.
Then I'd say, you know, given the, look at the agenda, and if there's room to add. Uh, ones that don't need more time to cook beyond what we've already said, great.
Well, and, and then again, well, there's things like the shed, which is a, a brand new thing that's just popped up this year. Um, on the, that was not on the capital plan last year, and suddenly it's a warrant article.
Yep.
I think we're going to, maybe before we even talk to these people, we need to make some decisions about. How we deal with the, you know, can deal with these. I, I mean, is it good enough to just put a placeholder for something, you know, on the warrant? And that we then are forced to, to look at it rather than putting it on the capital plan.
Who sponsored that? Or one of the select board members?
I didn't do it.
It's the Center Park, the.
Center Park did it? Yeah, that's what I thought.
I think they, you know, for things like this, the quicker we say no, the better, right? You know, we don't, we don't want things. I'm not, I'm not, not specific about the shed, but, you know, the longer it's on there, the more legs it grows.
Yeah, I, I agree. So do you want to see them soon? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, I, I would think so, yeah.
Okay.
Although, um, let me just say this, uh, just for the sake, I guess, of putting it out there, um. If, i- if, if we're of the opinion that, um, something that's been proposed, and there's a warrant article for it. And we don't, we, we, we have a brief discussion with, before we even hear the presentation, but if we know from our own. Uh, understanding of, of where we are in terms of our budget and long-term planning, that it's, it's not one that we would support. I don't know that we want to then put a group through coming in and making a presentation only then to, if we know that we're not going to support it going forward. But perhaps others feel differently, that it's important to let everybody be heard, and I'm okay with that as well.
Travis, you're on mute.
I, I know it takes time, but I generally would want to give people their due if they, you know, had a quick presentation. Maybe there's something we don't understand about it.
So I would say there's a bunch of small ones that we probably should hear then, in that case, and that would be conscom bog house repairs. Um, the bog water management, well, and the Center Park shed are two of those.
Again, I'm just one of five people, so if you want to, you know, we can take Barney's suggestion, too.
Uh, what, what did you understand her suggestion to be?
Well, if we want to try and rule out some of these ahead of time without even meeting with them.
Oh. Well, we got to have a decision, guys.
Well, the interesting thing is, is these aren't on the cap, you know, they're not, they're not on the capital. Let's hit, right?
But we didn't really have a policy in place to say if you have something, it should go on that, you know, this is. Coming to us tonight, and we're asked to make a decision on it, and now. Going forward, if we, everyone knew they had to be on the capital plan, that's one thing.
Yeah, we haven't really made it clear to sort of non-departments.
All right, so we need to do two things. We need to. Uh, at our planning meeting, uh, I will organize, I'll split these up and I'll have these guys come in the next couple of meetings. And in some sort of fashion, and, um, maybe we need to start working on a policy as well.
Policy would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the things that are becoming articles should already be in our five-year plan, right?
I would think, I think so. So.
Yeah, there's a Benfield ADA door here that I don't see on there. I'd like to hear more about that.
That's a miss, yes, that's true. Okay. Um. Ballot questions.
So before we, you go on, Kate, we probably should adjourn for FinCon, and I don't think you need us for that component.
Right? Well, uh, the budget timeline.
Oh, yeah, establish a budget timeline. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, we can, we can power through it. I didn't. I saw it was out of order. That's good. Keep going.
No, it's okay. We can take the timeline out of order.
So the ballot question is really simple. It's, um, the town clerk needs to come back on the ballot. And then if you're going to do the fire truck, do you want to exclude the debt? And then. I, I don't see how you don't exclude the police station debt. So those are the three warrant articles. Just letting everybody know for future discussions that that's coming as a decision point, so you can think about it.
Be ballot questions or? What did you? I'm sorry.
They, they would be articles, and if you want to exclude the debt, it has to be a ballot question.
Yeah, okay, just, right, so all three of those would have to be ballot questions. Yeah.
Okay, budget timeline.
So I guess the question is, it should be a relatively easy exercise. Of course, that's easy for me to say because Ryan does all the work. But, um. Ryan, we just need to figure out the best way to go back to the departments to, to just make sure that they're, they understand. What we're asking them to do. So the question is, how much time do we want to give the departments? That we've identified to go back. Um, to come back to us. I mean, to me. If we, if we were to say the thirteenth, if we were to send this out to them, say. And of course, jump in, I'm just throwing this out, if we had them sent, if we sent it out to them by like. Sixteenth or the nineteenth, give them till that, that Friday. But give them a week. Do you think that's too much? Could we pull it in? I'm just trying to determine the next meeting for us, too, so that we can all get together and look at what the results are, so. No stress, I'm just looking at the calendar. What do you think?
Yeah, we, we can try the, the one that's not really. The schools is the one that someone else is going to have to do. I mean, I can reach out to them and tell them, but. They have their own budget.
Um, are you talking CPS?
Both, really. I mean, the, those numbers.
Haven't you, but you've already, Brian, you already had that convo with. Um, Superintendent, um. Lori Hunter, right?
I, I think the regional school has its own path, the, the local.
They have a path. I mean, they need to know a date, I think. You have the relationship, I'd say you should probably just. I mean, I can do it, but if I, I can't remember, I'm either liaison to region two, but we. We should give them a date. We can't really do much else on their process. Just say we need to know by this date. Where you're at.
I'll reach out.
Yeah, I, I'm happy to reach out to school committee if you want me to, to engage in the process. They. I mean, Jim is already aware, he talked about it at the last school committee meeting last week. He's aware of the target, right?
It's about an eighty thousand dollar cut.
Yeah, so we just have to confirm that. So you tell me, do you want to do it, or you want me to do it?
I, I can tell Jim, but he's going to want you to tell the school committee.
All right, I'll do that. I will do that. Eighty thousand, is that the number?
Ryan, on, on your, uh, FY twenty-five budget, um, I don't see a line for the region. Where is, what, what line is that?
CCRHS, so that's, uh. Twenty-six.
Line twenty, oh, there it is. Okay, sorry. I just, I looked twice, I, I, okay, great.
It's late.
It is. Well, they, they, we don't have to tell them to, to cut because they're at below, uh, below three.
Well, they are, yeah, I mean, I'll have more information probably Thursday, but like I said. Their guideline, they're over their guideline for Concord, so. I have a sneaking suspicion we're going to see it, we're going to see an additional cut.
We, we will inherit a cut. We don't have.
We will inherit a cut. Yes, we will take it. Thank you.
I told Ryan, when the elephants dance, you just kind of back away, so. We're going to let them duke it out.
You got it. We can come out smelling like a rose because we didn't ask him to cut. Okay. All right, great, perfect, thank you. Um, great.
Well, the question, when do we need to get back with? I think the most immediate item is when do we need another joint meeting?
Well, yeah, but before that, Ryan, what makes sense in terms of being able to synthesize that information? Have it back so that finance, the FinCon can look at it, and then we can do the joint meeting? Again, I don't want to put any pressure on you, so.
You're good. The, uh, week of the twenty-six would be acceptable.
You think the twenty-six? Okay.
Next week, school vacation, so.
Okay, so great. We'll, we'll plan to meet on the twenty-sixth then.
And, and the planning, and is, we need to get, uh, on the twenty-seventh, so.
Okay, so we could do the joint if you want on that day. Does that work?
Oh, the land use summit, guys, is on six, at six thirty on Monday, the twenty-sixth.
Right, but does that involve the FinCon?
No, but it might involve, um.
Yeah, we don't, right, I don't think we need to be part of, well, that's the question. We don't need to be part of the twenty-sixth if they're going to come back and present on the twenty.
No, no, I understand. I'm just, I'm, I've been looking at our, for Ryan. Because I, I don't know how he's at two places at once.
He's a magician. He can, uh, he's in the same building.
So, anyway.
Ryan, I'll, yeah, let me know what that, if it's at six thirty, I don't want to completely corral you, but. That's probably a couple-hour meeting, I would assume, right?
Oh, yeah.
So we can, we can figure it out.
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
Twenty eighth, okay. All right, so February twenty-eighth. Which is, uh, Wednesday? Okay. And then that would mean the coordination meeting wouldn't happen until March. Is that, uh, too far out for you guys? I mean, I guess we could all, you know what, I guess we could all look at it together, I'm on the, uh. On the twenty-seventh. There's no harm in that. It's not like we have to get together earlier. Just for the sake of time, because I don't think we want to bleed this into March.
Yeah, I don't think so either, because our first March meeting is on the twelfth.
Yeah.
Yeah, it shouldn't wait that long, right?
Unless we have, unless we have, uh. An extra meeting in there somewhere, just for the budget.
Yeah, that's what we should do, probably. Maybe the following Tuesday or something like that. If income wants to deliberate on their own, then in the twenty-eighth, then we should have a meeting on the. Fourth or third of the day, it is.
Oh, yeah. The fifth. Which is a Tuesday.
Great.
Is everybody available for a meeting on the fifth?
March. That's the primary day. I don't know if that matters.
Yeah, we allowed to meet on a state primary day.
You know what? I think let's, I think we have a general sense. Let's try to get that. I would point out it's ten thirty and, I, you know, let's, the, the scheduling experts work it out, but we have a. Sense that we have to get this thing done roughly by the end of the month.
Yeah. Agreed. All right, I'll work it out with, uh, I'll work it out with Ryan and then check in with the select, and check in with our guys. Okay, so do you, so we're good for us to adjourn?
Yes.
All right, um.
Lucky you.
Wake on the FinCon, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moves.
Who is that?
That was James.
James, and then Aaron was second. And could I do a road call, please?
Mark said yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Tatia, aye.
Delia, yes.
Lila, an aye.
Yang, aye.
Yang I.
Lipinski I.
Showberg I.
Woo, we're up.
Brown I.
Take care. Nice night.
Thank you all.
You too.
You all.
Bye bye.
Sorry for keeping you all so late.
That was fun. That was a good time, Kate, with you.
All right. Um, we're at the TA report.
I, I'm gonna just keep it a real high level, so. The only thing that I'd like to discuss in the budget section is your insurance advisory committees, it's likely gonna bring you back. Those recommendations, you should look at, look at what I sent you, the um. The main thing is splitting retirees and active employees um for sort of a longer term reduction. Reason being is that Medicare covers some of their costs, so the actual employee impact or retiree impact is, is different, active to retiree, so. It, it, it's a discussion point, but something to, to look into and consider. Uh, land use summit's happening on the twenty sixth, I think that's gonna be some important conversations, you heard about MBTA tonight. You know about the cranberry bog conversations from your visits in the past. And accessory apartment bylaw is a really important townwide discussion. The police station renovation committee has met a couple of times, they've reviewed the designs, they've set up a meeting with all the. Land use boards to help facilitate some permitting and answer some questions there. And then I have established a meeting with the uh MEP engineers in order to talk about systems and that, and that type of thing. But uh, they have been keeping to your. Timeline and your budget in all of their decision making, so you picked a good board there, they're doing a great job. Library renovation, they're asking me to work with them to uh kick, kick off their renovation project, starting the hiring of an O P M. The DPW assessment started, this is to review that building for potential fixes and changes. Slew procurement, uh, those are just updates that you can look at. Our staff went to the MMA conference and learned a lot, and it was great to bring a delegation there, it was really inspiring to be there with our department heads. As they worked with their peers to understand what they could bring back to Carlisle. In your packet, I put a slate of legislative priorities that at some point you could consider approving. And sending to your legislative delegation, there's about twenty towns already that have done this across the state, and the more small town voices there are, the better. Uh, there's gonna be three rotary signs coming up, you can take a peek at that, I even put a picture in there, so you can look at it. And then the National Brain Tumor Society Ride is requesting permission to come through town, that'll be a motion at the end of this. Some upcoming discussion points, I, I again put financial policies and policy updates in this packet, please review them. We're gonna try and squeeze that in in the next meeting, and I know how much we have going on. Um, reminding you that I'll be gone March thirteenth to March twenty ninth, however, I'll be fully remote. And I am going to delegate my in-person responsibility, so this is just emergency stuff, nothing financial to collector, collector Sandy Nason. Again, for next time, have put in the cemetery task force and. Traffic and pedestrian safety committee revisions for the charters. And then for staff recognition, um, Jen at the library. Has applied for several cultural council grants and got them, I think the library is one of the, the best in the area, they put on the, the greatest programming. Um, some examples are in the, in the packet of, of what she was able to get grants for. And I am going on Friday to read to the preschoolers and to indoctrinate them about the excellence of local government, so. I was glad to be a part of that. Uh, library assistant, Sinoit Sinaut. Um, she was uh, nice enough to use her talents to decorate the leasing windows to create beautiful Carlisle winter scenes that people have been seeing. And then one of our pages, Mia, was accepted to NYU early admission, so obviously a very talented young person.
Who did her kindergarten year in Mrs. Arnold's class, I'd like you to know.
Looks like you uh did a good job.
Yeah, I said her on a good path.
I don't know if this, we have time, we have a, we'll, we'll work out the agenda for you. Unless you have a burning desire to look at it. That's my report.
All right, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the environmental sustainability committee for use of the town common April twenty sixth through twenty ninth. Twenty twenty four for Root to Sustainability Day. And to, and to hang, and further to hang a banner over school street, April first through April twenty ninth. Twenty twenty fourth, subject to the fire department schedule to advertise Root to Sustainability Day.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion, all those in favor, I'm sorry. Tired.
Arnold I.
Brown I.
More I.
Reed I.
Now I.
Okay. We did the cemetery, we did everything else except for the liaison reports, and I had some.
We have to, did we do the liquor license?
Yeah, we did it. Sorry. It's okay. Do, anybody have a liaison report?
No, community input.
Um, Ryan, Ryan, did you say you wanted us to vote though on the um, the route for the, 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 yeah. Group that was asking to do their regular route through town, forgotten what they're called.
Oh, the brain, the brain tumor society? No, what's?
We have to do that tonight?
No.
Okay.
Okay, it, it wasn't on the sheet anyway, okay, um, there is a, um, the agenda, the, you know, draft agenda. For next time. Uh, community input. I don't see any. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, so moved, second.
Moved and seconded.
Arnold I.
Brown I.
More I.
Reed I, I'll just keep this all here.
Light weights, I could go all night.
Well, sorry, I went so long. It was a packed agenda, and I think we did get a lot of work done, so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Take the rest of the night off.
Yeah, thanks.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I got to see.
Bye, Betsy, bye, Mary Lynn, and bye, Christina. Okay.